This is the seven o'clock regular session, City Council meeting October 25th. Okay, we're going to start with the roll call.
The record will show that all members are present.
City Attorney, closed session report?
Nothing to report.
Okay, we're going to go have a pledge by Councilman Webb and invocation by City Manager Homer Blue Dell. Please rise.
Please join me in the pledge to the flag of the United States. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please join me in verbal contemplation. Almighty God, through you, authority is administered, laws are enacted, judgment is free. Pray for our mayor and city council and staff that they are able to discharge their duties with honesty and integrity. We pray for enlightenment and right justice, for wisdom and understanding, for strength and patience. Blessing guide this evening's deliberations. Amen.
Thank you. City Clerk, we have a presentation first?
Yes, it's the Orange County Marathon presentation by Bill Sumner.
Now, let me ask you, how is this different than the agenda item which follows?
Mr. Mayor, I put this one on the presentation because the other item was on consent. I did not know whether it would be pulled off or not. So, I thought if it was pulled off, that after his presentation, if he pulled it off, he could just address the issue with him being present.
Well, is this an agenda item? Is there something different in the presentation than the agenda item? Because I'm going to pull 14.
Well, there wasn't going to be a presentation if it stayed on consent, and there was a desire to have a presentation.
Okay, that's fair. That's fair. So, since we're going to pull it, should we defer the presentation?
I don't know if Coach Sumner has a timing problem tonight or not.
Good. Lesson in civics. All right, City Clerk?
Notice to the public, the city provides a yellow sign-in card to assist in the preparation of the minutes. The completion of the card is not required in order to address the council. As a courtesy, please turn cell phones and pagers off or set them in the silent mode. This is a time for city council announcements or matters which council members would like placed on a future agenda for discussion, action, or report.
Okay, we'll start with you, Ms. Selich.
I have nothing to pull.
Chorazansky?
Nothing, thank you.
Mr. Webb?
Nothing.
Okay. Mr. Ridgeway?
Nothing, thank you.
Councilman Daigle?
Nothing to pull, but I did want to point out, appreciate the council's support on item number 15. That's the appointment of Ron Darling to the Aviation Committee, and Mr. Darling is a partner in a law firm, and I appreciate his willingness to volunteer in our community. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Nichols?
I'd like to pull--
No, wait a minute, these are just announcements, before we get to the consent agenda. Okay, we'll come back. These are just announcements. Okay, Mr. Webb, let's not cut you short.
I'm sorry, I was, I guess I must have been sleeping up here. We have to, as has been in past meetings, we have a centennial moment. There are now 310 days until the city becomes 100 years old on September 1st, 2006. Some of the things that have happened on this day in the past, we're looking at little bit more recent items. In 1977, for instance, the contract was awarded for the construction of Bayside Drive Park. This is the park that's along Bayside Drive up in the Marguerite area and going downhill. We also installed a traffic signal at Birch Street and Jamboree. The name of Old Newport Boulevard was created for the area that's just north of the Arches. It was originally called, or earlier called, North Newport Boulevard, but on October 25th of 1993, it was formally changed to Old Newport Boulevard. And then a project that was very near and dear to my heart was accepted on October 25th, 1999. That was the Arches Interchange Project, and the Public Works Director and his staff was complimented for their work. And even Councilman Ridgeway added that the Arches Interchange Project was the largest public works project the city has undertaken, and that it was done very smoothly. So, I'd like to thank Mr. Ridgeway for his kind comments in 1999. And that's your centennial moment.
No, we have more? Don't we have something in the lobby?
Okay, you're right. Thank you for the remembrance, reminding me. For those of you that come to the city council meetings, stop for a minute and look. As you walk in the door, on the left-hand side, there's a showcase, and the city clerk and her staff has assembled a group of centennial items. Was it Mary Lee Jackson also?
Janet Barbier, cultural arts coordinator.
Excuse me, Janet Barbier. And you'll see a number of items that reflect our history. Like, for instance, there's a picture of the city hall when it was dedicated in 1947 with a whole bunch of people outside. You have the city's flag. There's a couple of other older pictures that represent Newport. I won't tell you all about them, so you'll have to come down and take a look. But at any rate, we appreciate the wonderful exhibit that's been put together. Thank you.
Thank you. Any last-minute comments, announcements? Okay, good. City Clerk?
Consent calendar. All matters listed under consent calendar, items 1 through 15, are considered by the council to be routine and will all be enacted by one motion in the form listed below. The city council members have received detailed staff reports on each of the items recommending an action. There will be no separate discussion of these items prior to the time the council votes on the motion unless members of the council, staff, or the public request specific items to be discussed and/or removed from the consent calendar for separate action. Members of the public who wish to discuss a consent calendar item should come forward to the lectern upon invitation by the mayor, state their name and item number. If the optional sign-in card has been completed, it should be placed in the box provided at the podium.
Okay, we'll start with the council first. Mr. Nichols?
Thank you. I'm sorry. I would like to pull items 6 and 7.
Councilman Daigle?
No, none, thank you.
Councilman Ridgeway?
None, thank you.
None, thank you.
I have none.
Okay, I'd like to pull number 10, which is July 4th. I'd like a report from the police department as what the recap is on the July 4th enforcement action here on the peninsula. I'd like to pull item 14, the Orange County Marathon grant request. City Clerk?
Public.
Yes, I'm saying. No, I am. That's why I asked the city clerk. Okay, public, anybody want to come down and pull anything on the consent agenda? That's items 1 through 15. All right, we'll close that portion.
Remove affirmative action for the consent calendar, items 1 through 15, except for 6, 7, 10, and 14.
Second. Okay, discussion, let's vote.
Motion carries. Public comments. Public comments are invited on non-agenda items generally considered to be within the subject matter jurisdiction of the council. Speakers must limit comments to three minutes. Before speaking, please state your name for the record.
Okay, this is public comment on non-agenda items.
W.R., building of reside in the Balboa Pacific Plan area. Following the last council meeting on your discussions on city hall, I had a very restless night. Woke up at 4:00 in the morning, having served the state for over 21 years on a commission dealing with public contracts work, I started going through the books. I waited till 8:00, and I got the information I wanted. I have some packets, one for the city attorney, and for the four members, I believe, on the ad hoc committee on the city hall. I question your legal authority to bid this project or do this bid under design-build. I ask for no response now. Following that council meeting, I called city hall, was referred from one office to the other. The response I got, there's nothing in state law that prohibits us or in our city charter. Your city, the state law, and I have copies of it all here for you highlighted, I would just like you to address it. I do represent an organization out of Northern California that monitors public works contract. Previous to, or last February, February this year, there had been 17 statutes authorizing design-builds to specific entities. There were two more adopted this year which go into effect. There is not a city in California at this time that has the authority to use design-build.
Mayor, I'd be happy to take the materials, and then I'll look them through, and then I'd be happy to call you and talk to you about them.
Okay.
Because it's a legal, seems like a legal issue.
Yes, it is.
It is a legal issue. I hate, this is where I live. I just, I left here in '67, come back. I have more trouble talking to this group tonight than I've had any other community I've ever worked in or lived in or spoke before. I've been a licensed contractor since '64. I first got involved in public works in '69.
That's good. We'll take your material.
Thank you very much.
It's a legal issue, and we'll respond to it. City Attorney, will.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and council members. My name is Robin Sanders, and I am a former Tournament of Roses queen and a 22-year resident in the city. It is a pleasure to come before you this evening to make this announcement. As the council knows, for the first time in over 60 years, our city has entered a float in the Tournament of Roses Parade, which will be on January 2nd, and has the theme of its magical. And the theme of our float in Newport Beach is sailing through a century. The audience in the chambers and at home can see the unbelievably beautiful rendering that we have displayed in the front of chambers here, and I invite everyone in the city to become involved in this project one way or another, either by efforts, by donating funds, which would be money, we'll take that, and your time. The first would be the opportunity for the ride of a lifetime. Having done this before, I speak from experience. We have nine seats on the float, if you look at the rendering closely. Two are for children up front on the dolphin, and the remaining seven don't have to be children. In fact, we offer this as a wonderful opportunity for you to give your spouse, maybe for a newlywed couple, maybe for your grandparents, maybe for almost anyone, a neighbor that you really like. It's a wonderful opportunity. The seats on the float are going for $25,000, and it's a way of the city, for the city to underwrite this project. In addition, we are holding a community-wide opportunity drawing where we'll choose a winner to ride on the float, as well as at the end of the month, a campaign on eBay to auction off a seat. Secondly, we need volunteers. Again, having not only ridden on the float, but I grew up in the Pasadena area, and so we used to work on the floats, and it takes a lot of time, but it is a lot of fun. It is the most unbelievable experience, if you get to ride on it, it's wonderful. If you get to be a part of building it, it's a life changer. It really is, to watch it from the ground up. Starting on November 12th, we'll be sending people up there to work on the floats. Just prior to the parade is when they add the life flowers and the vegetation. Prior to that, there's a lot of things that have to be cut, a lot of seeds that can begin to be put on. It all depends on the life expectancy of that particular vegetation. The city has provided transportation for people that are wanting to participate, which is wonderful. So, I would encourage neighborhoods to get together. My daughter is in National Charity League. We're going to be putting together groups, neighborhoods, friends, churches, we encourage anyone that wants to do that. And you can either do transportation through the city or on your own. The last thing I would leave you with is the thought that we are all ambassadors for our city. I have the pleasure of representing the tournament here today, but I also have lived in Newport Beach, so I feel like I'm representing Newport Beach, and each of us gets to do that. I would encourage you to go to their website, which is www.nuitportbeach100.com for any information for the sign-up sheets, and realize that you are becoming a part of your own history by taking part in this opportunity. Thank you.
Robin? Mr. Webb, do you want to add anything to this?
I will on my report later on, but thank you very much, Robin, for giving us such a wonderful insight as to the float, its decoration, and the experience that it is to ride on the float.
Good. Come on up.
Hello, my name is Iman Jasim. I'm a veterinarian that works at Peninsula Animal Hospital, which is just about a block down the street. And the reason why I'm here today, I, earlier, there's distributed just this letter here. And Peninsula Animal Hospital is zoned commercial, and commercial zoning in this area does not allow us to board animals. And so, I'm here today to request the council initiate an amendment. Many of my clients have been requesting that we provide boarding for their, for our patients, and we would love the opportunity to be able to do that. So, what I'm requesting today is if the city council could initiate an amendment, and it's to the Canary Village-McFadden Square specific plan, and what that would do is to permit boarding of animals in commercial zones, but that would be subject to conditional use permit. And the subject, the use permit, would, at a particular location, would then be subject to individual assessment, and so that no detrimental effects would occur to anybody in the area. I thank you very much for your consideration.
Thank you. Mr. Ridgeway, you want to comment? It's your district.
It is my district. Actually, I, there's a, I support the concept, if it didn't happen in Canary Village itself. And Sharon, are you sure the middle swath of land between the two Balboa Boulevards, is that in the Canary Village-McFadden Square text? That area is in the text? Okay. Well, I know there is a demand, and certainly that area of land is not a detriment to any residential, resident areas in the area, but I think if the application of this becomes global to the entire community, that's another consideration. But I can promise you, I will follow up on this internally, and somebody will get back to you. Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening, Honorable Mr. Mayor and council members. My name is Dolores Oding. I live in Newport Beach. I want to thank the city for attempting to fix the leaking street at Spiglass Hill Road. It's still leaking, but I'm sure the city knows that. And secondly, I write a column called The Watchdog Column that comes out every two weeks. And when I was at the Planning Commission, when they went over the general plan amendment a few weeks ago, they had this new-looking camera that was right here, and that was the only camera. And someone at that, at that meeting said, oh, we're going to be videotaping the Planning Commission meetings. And so, I, of course, put that in my column this past Sunday with how you could video-stream and see the city council and now the Planning Commission meetings. And that was misinformation to the public, and I apologize for that because they were just kidding around, and that really wasn't happening. So, but to make a long story shorter, I kind of think that perhaps that would be a good idea if we did video-stream the Planning Commission meetings, since trying to listen to the audio of those you have seen to be almost impossible. They do have good minutes, but in the meantime, it would be much easier to just have it on your computer than have to come down to the city hall. I know that we, our contract with Adelphia only says that we can video, that they only will tape our city council meetings. However, since we now know that we almost have as much money as God, it might not be so far-fetched to videotape the Planning Commission meetings for the public, since they do serve such a great need and do such a fantastic job in our community, and a lot of people can't get out and want to know what's happening. And so, I was just hoping that that could be something. I know that you set policy, and you might want to think about that. They, so that was my apology, and hopefully, maybe we could actually do that in the future. Thank you very much.
Can I ask for a clarification? What do we do with planning commission meetings now? Is it just live only?
No, it's not, it's not taped and shown on TV at all. It never has been. No, it hasn't.
It's an audio tape.
It's an audio tape that you can check out or something, or it's kept on record?
Yes, it is available.
It is available?
Okay.
Through where? Your office?
Through the Planning Commission, Planning Commission staff in the Planning Department.
Planning Department, okay. Any other? Yes, come on up.
I just wanted to check, because I just got here. Is this public comments?
Yes, non-agenda items.
Okay. Tom Billings, Protect Our Parks. And I'd like to speak tonight as a resident on two issues that center on parkland. The first is the Cro-Mare Beach--
No, I pulled that. You'll have your chance. No, no, that one, you'll have your chance.
So, don't speak on that right now?
No, no, because it's going to come back. We're going to talk about the work underway at--
Come back tonight?
Yes, I pulled it, was on the consent agenda, and I pulled it, and it's going to come back and be heard.
Okay.
So, you can talk on, you can talk on that item when it comes back.
Okay, thank you. Second item is really just an announcement in terms of Marina Park, and there's been a lot in the press lately about it. And I just wanted to let everyone know, and the public, that Protect Our Parks is alive and well, and strong, and we're moving forward with our park plan called Window to the Day. Truly a park plan for the entire community. And we welcome any groups or individuals that would love to see that. And we have an email you can contact, info@newport-parks.com. Thank you.
Thank you. Public comment, non-agenda items.
Good evening, John Batol from Newport Beach. I'm here tonight on behalf of Newport's responsible government just to report to the council on the progress that we're having in gathering signatures for our initiative. As you all know, the initiative requires voter approval prior to the city's incurring any debt by virtue of certificates of participation. And we've been able to be out there gathering signatures since, I believe, October 2nd, when we received back the ballot title and summary from the city clerk's office. And in that three weeks, we've managed to gather almost 1,000 signatures. Have here petitions containing those 1,000 signatures, and just to let the council know that this is not just a few residents of Newport Beach, but quite a number of residents and voters who are interested in placing this issue on the ballot so that the people will have an opportunity to vote. Thank you.
Thanks. Anybody else, non-agenda items? All right, I'm going to close this, bring it back. City Clerk?
Oral reports from city council on committee activities.
Okay, Ms. Selich, general plan?
We'll be having a general plan update committee meeting on November 7th at 4:00. We had a meeting two weeks ago and discussed some technical issues on formatting the land use element and had a, had a preliminary review of, of a rough draft of how it would be formatted.
Is that it? That's good. Mr. Ridgeway on the LCP?
On October 13th in San Diego, the California Coastal Commission approved our land use element, our LCP, the land use component unanimously, and it was supported by everybody in the audience. There were a number of citizens who did show up. There will be a meeting, a reconvening of the, the local coastal program certification committee, of which I'm the chair. Our first meeting will be on November 2nd, so that would be next week. On Wednesday at 1:00 PM, I think in the fire conference room, but anyhow, November 2nd, 1:00 PM, here at city hall. I do, and we'll, we'll leave a note where it is. So, we're going to reconvene, start to review what the coastal commission approved, and continue on with the implementation program statutes. I think that's an accurate comment. Would it not be, Patrick?
Okay, good.
And Senior Planner Patrick Alfred is here, if you wanted to have a report on what the next steps are from here now that we have that action by the coastal commission.
I think it would be appropriate for all citizens in this council to hear.
Mayor, members of the city council. I think I'll just give you an update on actually what happened at the coastal commission hearing. I'd like to report that the compromised language that we worked out with coastal commission staff in the addendum to their staff report was approved without any changes. However, I can say that there was any additional progress on the outstanding issues that are reported at the last meeting. The policies on the prohibition of onshore oil and gas facilities and on onshore facilities supporting offshore operation was deleted as recommended by coastal commission staff. The policy addressing ambiguities and wetland characteristics was deleted. However, there were findings that were approved that mirrored our original policy, which we can use to provide guidance on this issue. And then finally, the 25-foot minimum bluff edge setback for coastal bluffs that are subject to erosion remained in. There were exceptions for Ocean Boulevard and Carnation Avenue, and in the addendum, staff convinced the coastal commission staff to include the properties on Pacific Drive in that exception. There were also three new modifications added by members of the coastal commission. One wanted a definition added on what the term qualified biologists meant. There was a modification to a policy dealing with offers to dedicate that would change the term private association to one relating to non-governmental organizations. And then finally, they wanted a general policy prohibiting invasive plants in non-urbanized areas. City staff is working with the coastal commission staff to work out the precise wording of these modifications, and we are also awaiting the official notice from the coastal commission staff on the coastal commission's action, which we're expecting this week. Coastal Commission's action, which we're expecting this week. As indicated, the LCP Certification Committee will review these modifications in detail on November 2nd. When the review is completed, we will schedule a hearing before the City Council to present analysis of the modifications in detail and bring it up for final action by the City Council.
Is that the formal action? That it has to be adopted now by the City Council?
Yes. If you want, we could bring it into just as an analyze and have a hearing several.
No, 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 I was just thinking of the ultimate action item. The formal process, and the City Council adopts what, in this case, the Coastal Commission has approved.
And then the council has to adopt the implementation program also?
Yes. There's actually one other step in that, in that, again, we're waiting for the official notification on the procedure, but I spoke to Coastal staff since the hearing, and they indicated that they would take the final form of the document that is approved by the council back to the Coastal Commission, and they would essentially certify that it includes all the modifications that they made.
Okay. And Mr. Blue Dot, when do you think that's all going to happen?
I think Mr. Alfred would have a better idea of that than myself.
Is that a year-end action item? We'll have this done by year-end, or is that going to spill into?
If the LCP Certification Committee doesn't take multiple meetings, yes, I think that certainly could be done.
Good.
But Patrick, I think the question that everyone wants to know is when the city would start issuing its own permits.
Yeah. Well, as I say, after, once the land use plan is finalized and adopted by the city, then we would complete work on the implementation plan. Now, that's going to be somewhat of a lengthy process. It'll probably take a good part of next year. The committee has to finalize the language. We have to have scheduled hearings for the Planning Commission and the City Council. And then we'll need to submit an application to the Coastal Commission. As is the case with the land use plan, they could take anywhere from 90 days to up to 15 months in which to review that application. And if they do approve the implementation plan, then once again, we'll bring it back to the city, and the council would have final say on that item. If all goes true, then we could actually have the authority to start issuing permits. So it really depends on how long the Coastal Commission would take. I feel confident we could complete the implementation plan and through the hearing process locally by the middle of next year.
I share that optimism. I'd make one comment. I've been here seven years. I was six years on Planning Commission. We actually had started meetings at Planning Commission seven years ago. This thing has lingered and lingered and lingered. I'm just, as one person, I'm pleased that we're this far along, and I share Patrick's optimism. I think the committee will work double time, if need be, to try to get the entire land use plan into effect and adopted by the city by the end of next year. That's my goal, because a year from December, I'm gone.
It'd be a good advantage to have the continuity of your experience, Mr. Ridgeway, and have it done, rather than, because you have all the knowledge. It's great. Any other questions for Mr. Alfred? Yes, Ms. Nichols?
I would just like to ask, the three streets that you talked about, Ocean, Pacific Boulevard, and Carnation, were claiming those are, or were saying or admitting those are coastal bluffs?
I think definitely the ones on Ocean Boulevard meet the definition of coastal bluffs. Carnation is less clear, and Pacific Drive is less clear. However, the way the language is worded, they want bluff edge setbacks. And whether it is a 25-foot minimum or based on the predominant line of development, in these three areas, on these three streets, they go beyond the bluff edge. So we were able to demonstrate to Coastal staff that these areas have different development pattern, and they could not comply with a bluff edge setback. So whether they are coastal bluffs or non-coastal bluffs, we recognize that the development is beyond the bluff edge, and so there should be an exception, and they did approve that exception.
Okay. There is an appendix to the coastal section that they have on the web that shows a group of homes in Malibu along the beach. And they use that as a defining criteria for how to develop what is a coastal bluff and how far back the use rights of people go. And I think it's worth our looking at, because that's, certainly that's right along a bluff, and they're not claiming that's a coastal bluff. I mean, they're basically saying that our land rights go back to 25 or 50 feet beyond the mean high tide, depending, or then they also talk about a grass growing on the nearest sand dune and a few things like that, so I.
I think what you're referring to is provisions that deal with appeals, permits, and jurisdictional boundaries, and.
This specifically was supposed to help people to understand where the public property rights ended. And they addressed the coastal bluff that way. At least that's what I understood.
There are different policies regarding coastal bluffs in terms of public access, but those are more generalized policies, and they don't actually deal with development on the bluff face itself. And that's really what we're talking about at the moment.
All right. I think we've kind of taken as much juice as we can out of this committee report, and we should probably leave it at that. Okay, thanks. Mr. Webb? Excuse me, Newport Coast Advisory is meeting every other month. It meets next on November 7th, 5:30, Newport Coast Elementary School. So come on up. Mr. Webb?
I have nothing to report on the Mariners' library, other than the library itself has its, what's the first coat of stucco called?
Scratch coat.
Scratch coat of stucco on it, and instead of looking black, it now looks tan. And it's looking better every day. The Marina Park Committee is, doesn't have anything to report. They have finished their duties until the City Council asks them to do something differently. And the Centennial Committee, the Steering Committee, meets this coming Thursday at 3:30 PM at the Riverboat. And as we had earlier, 1975 Rose Queen, Robin Saunders, talked about our float. We have a picture here, as well as one over on the side over there. And I just want to remind everybody again, November 12th, we'll need to have volunteers to cut up dry things. And you can find out about that and volunteer on www.nuitportbeach100.com. Click Events. When you see Events, click Rose Float, and you'll see the ability to volunteer.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Ridgeway, you have a report? Excuse me.
I have a question for, I don't know who, on the Marina Park Advisory Committee. When is that report going to come in front of the council, or I presume it's a report?
Well, I think the committee was requesting a special meeting on the part of the City Council, so you can direct me differently, but since we have special meetings dealing with the general plan, I was not looking at bringing that for at least another month.
Probably after the first of the year, huh?
I think so.
Okay. Do you have a comment on that? Okay, Mr. Ridgeway, you want to, on that last Marina Park Committee?
Oh, there's nothing to report on that.
Okay. Other committee activities? Okay, hearing none? City Clerk?
Item number 16 is the Planning Commission agenda for October 20th.
Who's giving that report?
I will be giving it this evening. At last Thursday's meeting, the Planning Commission had a number of items that they continued. The first was for, to authorize a private club serving as an alcohol and drug counseling center in the Cannery Village area, and they were requesting a parking waiver of 55 spaces. That was continued at the request of the applicant, but there were a number of people who were here for that hearing, so the commission took some testimony before continuing. The next item was a combined application of an off-site parking agreement for Riviera Magazine on 32nd Street and an amendment to an off-site parking agreement with the Cannery Restaurant, because the magazine used, wanted to be able to use some of the Cannery's off-site spaces during the day to satisfy their parking requirement. At sort of the last minute, I think the Cannery changed their mind on making that offer to Riviera Magazine, because some of the conditions of approval staff had been proposing. And so the amendment to the off-site parking agreement was withdrawn, and the item, the entire item was removed from calendar. Again, however, members of the public were here to speak, and so the Planning Commission listened to them. The next item was a zoning amendment subdivision map and environmental document for residential development on Bayside Drive, and that was continued without any testimony at the request to the applicant. And then, having started earlier at 3:00 to review the natural resources and recreation elements of the general plan, the commission continued that at the end of the evening and finished with those.
I have a question.
Yes, Councilman Diggle?
I understand with the Riviera Magazine application, it's not dead. They can continue to work with staff to bring this back to the Planning Commission?
Yes, because their request for an off-site parking agreement was not withdrawn. It was the amendment to the other existing off-site parking agreement that was withdrawn.
Okay, well, I appreciate your working with the magazine. They're a lifestyle magazine. They'll cover the Centennial, the Orange County Marathon, and so on. And here this evening, we may be considering sponsorship of the marathon, and part of that would be to get positive coverage of our city. And so I think that, I would encourage us to continue to work with this applicant.
Any other comment? Ms. Nichols?
Just item four there, Sharon, that was continued now, or the 9/19 Bayside?
Yes, it was continued.
Okay.
To November 3rd.
Do you know why it was continued? Is there an issue of FAR on that project?
I don't think so. I'm not sure what the applicant's reason was, but it was at the applicant's request.
I understood staff said that they couldn't have their FAR because there was a parcel in front that was in the water. Do you know anything about that?
I don't know the details of that one.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions, comments? All right, City Clerk?
Item number 17, repeal of Resolution Number 200548, authorizing the city manager to reject documents relating to the transfer of Adelphia's franchise to either Time Warner or Comcast.
Mr. Mayor, this item's coming back, I think, two meetings ago. So basically, the City Council wanted it brought back in order to delete the authorization of the city manager, or my designee, to reject these documents. So this could have been on consent, just basically repealing that previous.
Then I'll move the action.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion. We have a comment up here from council. Questions, any comments to staff? Councilman Diggle?
All right. This particular resolution, as it's written, is the authority would be applicated to the staff and the telecommunications committee, and I oppose that. And interestingly, I sit on the telecommunications committee. And I believe that, I really support that the authority to reject forms and transfers and all that should rest with the full City Council.
Okay, good. Any other questions, comments? All right, I'm going to open this up to the public.
Good evening. My name is Dolores Oding. I live in Newport Beach. This is agenda item number 17, and I guess I'm a little bit confused by, it says that the city's franchises are non-exclusive, meaning that any cable company can request a franchise agreement, enter the city of Newport Beach, market, build a cable system, and solicit customers. Well, I guess that's true for the cable people, but we as customers don't have a choice as to who we deal with. I mean, if we wanted another cable company, there's no way that we can get one. We have, I have Cox and other people have, I mean, like have Adelphia. And I guess my problem with it is, is that the past two weeks, Adelphia has not rebroadcast the City Council meetings themselves, so nobody has been able to get any information, unless you go on the computer to video streaming, but you cannot lie in your bed or in your big easy chair and watch a City Council meeting and also channel surf. So there has been no public information given out there, okay, which meant that nobody got to see Fire Chief Riley's excellent presentation on emergency warning and disaster preparedness, which somehow should get re-aired or anyway. So I have a problem with all these companies, because I live in the land of Cox, and when you go watch a rerun, you have what's called a Venetian blind effect, where you don't even get to see a picture, okay? You get to see these lines go down, and I call my friends that have Adelphia, and they have a crisp, clear picture. So since we're going to be negotiating these things, perhaps we could negotiate that we could see them, since we pay for them. So thank you very much for your time, and I appreciate it.
Okay, any other public comment on the site? All right, we're going to close public comment, bring it back to the council. Councilman Diggle, do you want to finish up on this?
Yes, I know I was a student in Western Europe in the 1980s, and they had three channels, and two were government. So I guess the good thing about America is we have over 500 channels, so there's a little variety out there.
Okay, let's vote.
Motion carries.
Okay, City Clerk?
Item number 18, Establishment of Public and Human Service Grants Committee.
Who's giving the report here?
Dan Trimble will.
Great, thank you, Dan.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Tonight, we are discussing a proposal to establish a committee that would look at the Community Development Block Grant, Public Service Grant allocation process, as well as the Human Service Grant process. You may be familiar with the Community Development Block Grant. We just did that in May. And in that process, we allocate the 15% of our federal block grant that is entitled to go to public service agencies. And the Human Service Grants are an annual budget item that is reviewed by the city manager's office and then allocated according to council policy and approved by council with the budget. What this resolution would do would establish a committee of three council members to review both of those processes and make recommendations. Is there any questions, sir?
Where did this come from? Whose idea was to form another committee?
This was requested at the May 2005 City Council hearing.
By one of us?
As one of the council members.
Okay, whose idea was this? Mr. Zansy, go ahead.
Councilman Ridgway.
Councilman Diggle?
I think it was Councilman Ridgway and myself.
Yes.
I'm going to implicate him on this one.
Pass the buck, pass the buck. Well, why don't you tell us, how much money is it, how much money is the city giving out typically, before we establish another committee?
The Human Services Grant is $25,000 per year, and the amount of public service funds for the block grant changes from year to year. It's usually in the range of about 35.
So 35 and 25 is 60 grand.
Yeah.
Okay. That's what's at stake here, and we're going to form another committee to deal with it. Okay, I'm going to bring it back to the council for comment. Any questions? Ms. Selich?
Well, I wasn't here when it was requested, but I mean, isn't this something that the staff can do rather than have another committee?
Well, I.
Well, what I would suggest is maybe that staff can consult each of the council offices to see if we have any, for our input, but really have the staff manage it instead of having another committee.
Let me say, I think it's a responsibility of council to dole out this money. I think the issue this year, and I don't, I kind of remember the May hearing, where you had applications from people who were outside the city. I think Mr. Nichols certainly complained. I know he did not vote for it, but I think the allocation of funds to charitable organizations really resides here, the responsibility for it, and not to a citizen committee. Perhaps as you're reviewing these at a staff level, you could, you know, you could let each council member know you have a list of charitable organizations, and does anybody have any responses before you bring it to a public hearing? Because what happens at the public hearing, Dan, if you remember, you reduced it down specifically to the dollar amount and the charities, and we didn't have an opportunity to see all the other charities who made applications, yet we received letters from probably 90% of them. So we were taken out of the equation. I think more importantly, it probably should just be an ad hoc committee of council in conjunction with staff and at that point in time, instead of a citizens committee. And then if councilmen have any strong feelings.
The resolution doesn't propose a citizens committee. It proposes a subcommittee of the council.
Oh, it does. Oh, it does.
But I think I'm understanding what you're saying in terms of, you want to, you want staff to provide information to the council when we receive the grant applications, not at the end of the process after the decision's been made.
Yeah, I think if you have a list of 25, and you know, you're going to cull it down to seven, you just provide that to council as a preliminary staff report, and then council can interface.
Maybe you can put on the consent calendars and FYI-type information.
Yeah, I just think that's more appropriate. I, last thing, last thing I need is another committee. I mean, I think I had four meetings here, a city hall today and three yesterday. I mean, I just tell you.
It's a great place.
Yeah.
Just a quick clarification. Did you say that the CD BG funds are only 35,000?
The 15% of our annual allocation, that, another reason that we're probably seeing more comments at the council meetings now is that grant has significantly reduced over time, and that portion of the money that goes to those programs is being reduced as it.
So, you're only talking about allocating that portion by this committee, not all CD?
No.
BG funds, thank you.
Any other comments? Okay. We have a motion here, do we know what we want to do?
I'd just make a motion to deny the request at this point in time and reestablish the policy. But you do have to open this up to the public.
I will.
I'll second that motion.
Second, okay, we have, we have an action item here. We'll open to public comment. All right, seeing that, we're going to close it and bring it back to council. Motion is to not proceed with a new committee.
Motion carries.
Okay.
That's, last government is good government.
Since you would have been on the committee, Todd.
There's a few more committees we could probably work on here, if you're so motivated.
Okay, City Clerk?
Item number 19 is information about LEED. This is a presentation by Rick DiAmato, LPA Architects.
Okay, what's the background on this? Mr. Blue Down?
Background on this is that this is the, really, second to the last presentation we're looking at. Before Griffin Structures contract is completed, I think, two meetings ago, there were some questions about LEED, and we decided that there would be a special presentation just regarding LEED issues.
All right, well, for, for all of us who don't know it, you might explain what that, that abbreviation means.
Leadership in Energy and Environmental Design.
I know that, but what does it really mean? Come on.
Well, that's what the presentation is going to explain to those who are watching and those who may not know. Council, staff isn't requesting any direction from the city council unless the city council wants to provide it. So, this is an informational presentation.
Does this make the building environmentally friendly? Does this make it a bomb shelter? Can we have any sort of a lead on the topic?
Environmentally sensitive.
Thank you, that's all I wanted, thank you. Efficient, environmentally efficient.
I should have followed your lead in the first.
No, I was just trying to get a, get the score of the World Series game.
Who has the lead on that one?
City Clerk? Well. Well, this World Series, it's only, it's game three.
Rick, this won't take as long as our day-long trip in the rain, will it?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
It started at six in the morning.
Chicago's leading five to four.
Five-four, you heard it here.
Seven looks like.
What inning? Seventh inning, five-four. Chicago's in the lead. If we run this meeting long enough, we'll, we can be here for game four.
I'd prefer not to do that.
Let's, since we have a little dead time, you want to explain what this means if you have LEED certification?
You want me to give the presentation, don't you?
We'll go back, we'll have a pitch count next, and then we'll just, we'll just fulfill the time in. Mr. Kiff, do you want to add anything here? Since we have a little, all right, you're looking dressed tonight, so I thought we'd give you some camera time.
All right, sorry about that.
Okay.
All right.
Tell us who you are and who you're with and why you're here.
I'm Rick DiAmato, partner with LPA Architects.
Great, thank you.
And I'm here tonight to present the LEED design integration. It's not just about LEED, it's about environmental design. They really go hand in hand, for the benefit of those at home. LEED is actually the Leadership in Energy and Environmental Design. It's a green building rating system that represents the U.S. Green Building Council's effort to provide a national standard for what constitutes a green building. Through its use as a design guideline and a third-party certification tool, it aims to improve occupant well-being, environmental performance, and economic returns of buildings using established and innovative practices, standards, and technologies. And I think as we go through this, you'll really get a clear understanding as to actually how it works. Why do we design LEED buildings? Well, a LEED-certified building limits energy and material consumption and therefore reduces operating costs. A LEED-certified building is environmentally responsible. A LEED-certified building takes into account the occupant's well-being. They set positive environmental examples. You may ask yourself, well, why don't we just design an environmentally friendly building and not necessarily go for LEED? We've done numerous environmental buildings throughout the years, and every time that you have LEED associated with it, it really helps to maintain the focus. A lot of times, when you're just going to design an environmental building, a lot of things tend to fall through the cracks. If you have LEED certification as a goal, it really helps you to maintain that as a focus. There are actually five basic LEED categories, one being sustainable sites, water efficiency, energy and atmosphere, materials and resources, and indoor environmental air quality. There is also an additional category, which is innovation and sustainable design. Anytime you do something that's sort of out of the norm or above and beyond what's expected from an environmental building, that's considered an innovation point. Why LPA when it comes to environmental buildings? LPA has done more LEED-certified projects than any other firm in the state. We have 39 LEED-accredited professionals on staff. We designed the largest gold-certified LEED project in the country, which is the Toyota facility, which some of you toured. We are recognized leaders in sustainable design. Our president, Dan Heinfeld, lectures on sustainable design throughout the country. In addition, I will be speaking at the USGBC Green Council, or Green Build Council Conference next month in Atlanta on greening public buildings. In addition, we've also developed our own LEED checklist software, which is currently being utilized by the CSU School System to analyze and project LEED certification for public buildings. And in addition to that, we are also publishing a book on, called Mainstream Green, which features all of our sustainable designs and strategies. A lot of people from very early, very early on were critical of the site plan for many reasons. But I'd like to kind of go through that now, and I think it's going to become really clear as far as the environmental nature of the site plan and why it is the way it is, both from a functional as well as an environmental standpoint. When we look at the sustainable site credits, as I mentioned earlier, we're actually achieving quite a lot. Each one of the credits that I showed earlier has a different point system throughout it. Some have 14, some have five, it depends on the actual credit. LEED doesn't actually take into account where you achieve those credits. They can be in any one of those different categories. In this particular category, we're achieving the Reduced Site Disturbance Credit, which is a reduction of footprints and an increase in public open space. That's due to the two-story nature of the city hall, as well as the four-story parking structure. One thing that was said in the last council meeting that I'd like to clarify, someone had mentioned that the parking structure was as tall as a four-story building. That's actually not true. It is a four-story parking structure, but the floor-to-floor height on a parking structure is considerably less than a typical building. So, the parking structure is actually only the height of a two-story building at 35 feet, and it's actually a couple of feet lower than the city hall structure. So, it's not quite going to have that impact that they were talking about. We are also achieving the Reduction of Heat Islands, both from the parking structure and the roof structure. There's actually two different credits there. And what you're doing there is displacing the thermal difference between areas of the project that are developed, as opposed to areas that are undeveloped. We're doing that with the use of the parking structure, because of course, if you were going to lay out those four levels of parking structure on a flat site, you'd have a lot more hardscape, you'd have a lot more heat gain. We're also doing it with an Energy Star roof system on top of the city hall. Effective stormwater management, managing contaminants from the site, and reduction of light pollution. That's actually a very difficult point to achieve. We've never actually been able to achieve that in the past, and it looks as if this will be the first time we're able to achieve that due to the nature of the design of the building. In addition to these points, it looks like we're also achieving alternative transportation and public transportation access, because the site is located between two different bus routes. We are actually providing bicycle storage and changing rooms through the implementation of the shower facilities at the fire station. And we will have carpool and vanpool designated parking areas. And our water efficiency credits, there's actually only five available credits there, so we're doing quite well with water-efficient landscape, just treating, utilizing drought-tolerant landscape and efficient irrigation systems. The idea of water reduction, we actually achieved two points there, because you can get a point for 20% reduction, as well as 30% reduction. We actually feel we're going to well exceed the 30% reduction in water use through the use of waterless urinals, which that is a picture of, low-flow fixtures, and dual-flush toilets. We actually think we're going to achieve what's an innovation credit here, because you can get an innovation credit by exceeding the intent of the actual credit. And we think we're going to really save enough water to achieve the innovation credit in this category. In energy and atmosphere credits, the optimization of energy performance with the building shell, this is where a lot of the aesthetic design comes into play. The sales in particular are allowing us to allow natural light into the spaces. The sales and actually the north wall, which is allowing a lot of natural light into the space and allowing us to actually dim the lights when enough natural light is present within those areas. You have a real high concentration of private offices around the perimeter of the building, which is not allowing us to achieve that credit around the perimeter of the building. So, we were looking for places within the building where we could actually dim the light system and save some energy costs. And those two particular areas are where that's happening. Also ozone protection, the equipment that we're using is not utilizing certain chemicals within the refrigerants that will not deplete the ozone layers. Under Materials and Resource Credit, we have construction waste management. That has to do with construction of the building and how the, the waste from construction is handled and recycled. Recycled content of materials, that actually has to do with the recycled contents of materials used in construction and in the final finishes of the building, including carpet, steel, drywall, and millwork. And those have all been carefully selected to achieve this credit. The local manufacturing and harvesting of building materials, that's where the whole idea of tilt-up concrete really benefits us from an environmental standpoint, since tilt-up is basically formed on-site. You don't have offsite manufacturing and trucking into the site, so you eliminate all of that. We actually think we're going to achieve an innovation credit in this particular item as well, because of the use of tilt-up panels. Certified wood products, only using certified wood products and not endangered wood products throughout the facility, and we are definitely achieving that credit. Indoor environmental quality credits, construction indoor air quality management. That has to do with throughout the construction of the project, maintaining adequate interior air quality that will also carry over into the final building occupants. Low-emitting paints, sealers, solvents, adhesives, carpets, and wood, that's actually several different credits. We're achieving that in all of those areas, based on the solvents and adhesives that we are utilizing and specifying. The controllability of the building systems, mainly, we achieve that credit through the use of operable windows. What that refers to is the ability for people to control their own environment. If someone is hot in their office, they'll be able to open up a window. We have operable windows in almost 90% of the building areas. Ventilation effectiveness, again, that's where the sales come into play. What that refers to is the isolation of any rooms that have intense chemical or fumes or anything like that. So, we've isolated our print shop that is ventilated through one of those sales skylights. It's also lit through one of those sales skylights. So, those will actually be ventilated, and you will actually be able to separate that ventilation from the overall building ventilation. Our innovation credits, we're looking at doing, utilizing a really aggressive community education campaign through signage and graphics. You could see some examples of these here that we've done for other projects, where every item that we've utilized and every item that we've designed into the building will be carefully displayed in signage and graphics, as you can see here by some examples that we've shown. We also are looking at innovation credits and exceeding the intent of a credit, which I explained earlier. We're looking at doing that through water efficiency and locally manufactured products. You get an innovation credit for LEED-accredited professionals. I'm a LEED-accredited professional, and so is 39 people on our staff. And Griffin Structures also has LEED-accredited professionals, so we pretty much covered that credit. Another thing which we like to offer is the idea of green housekeeping. This is a really easy credit to achieve, but it's really one of the most effective. What this is, it's really a program and a strategy for how you actually maintain the facility through the use of recycled paper products for cleaning, certain detergents and solvents that don't contain certain chemicals that you don't want to let loose into the environment. We've actually done a study for a project that we're working on in Riverside, which is also going to be a LEED-certified project. And the pricing on these products, and actually, the pricing on a service called Resource Collection, which comes in and maintains the building, is actually less than what you would find in a typical building maintenance service. So, that's something we can definitely look into. And it's really an intelligent way to maintain the building. With the credits that I just displayed, we're looking at a potential of 31 credits, which is the level of base certification. Base certification is 26 or higher. Silver is 33 to 38 credits. Gold is 39 to 51 credits, and platinum is 51 credits and above. We like to go in a little stronger than the actual certified level that we're looking at, because during the design of the project, during the, the review of the project by LEED, a lot of times, some of the credits will fall out based on certain ways and certain things that happen during the construction process. So, we feel very confident that we'll be able to get certified based on the 31 credits. And we're very, very close to silver, which would be wonderful. We also have a potential of 40 credits, which would get us to gold. On the packets that you've been handed, there's actually a breakdown based on the LID software that we've created that shows you where we are achieving potential credits and, as well as the credits that we are expecting to get. So, you can see a real clear depiction of that at the end of the, the presentation which you have in your hands. One of the potential credits that we're looking at is renewable energy in the form of photovoltaic panels. One really great thing about photovoltaic panels, as opposed to a lot of the other specific sustainable items that we mentioned, is that they are really highly visible, highly identifiable, sustainable strategy. The way we looked at implementing photovoltaic panels, should you choose to go in that direction, is that we would need approximately 15 cars covered with a prefabricated carport system. It's actually one of the much more affordable ways to implement photovoltaic panels, and it's actually one of the more effective ways of implementing them. We'd actually need one at either end of the parking structure. So, there'd be one here, as well as one here on the very top, both facing south. That would achieve the 5% renewable energy credit that we were looking for. It also achieves two other credits in other different categories. So, photovoltaic panels are a great way, they're a very visible way. They also become a very good educational tool for the community. The other potential credit that we were looking at was gray water irrigation. What this refers to is actually the collection of rainwater and the collection of gray water from the building that's been used in the building, the filtration of that and the use of that in irrigation systems. This is a kind of a high-cost credit to achieve, but it's really, really effective. It could greatly reduce your water consumption, greatly reduce your annual costs, and it's also highly visible. You would do a tank in the landscape area that would be signed in graphics. You would show how that whole system works. I think some of you saw some of that on our LEED tours. It's really a great, effective way to achieve a environmental strategy. If indeed this building is LEED-certified, it will be the first LEED-rated city hall in the United States. There's only one other LEED-rated city hall, and that's currently in Canada. If it achieves silver or gold, it will be the only silver or gold LEED-rated building in the world, which is quite impressive. And that's basically my presentation.
And if you get certified, do you get a scholarship and get the building for free, or?
Not quite, no.
All right. Okay, thank you, a very fine presentation. Don't quite leave yet, I'm sure there'll be potentially some questions. Mr. Selig?
Yeah, what's, what's the payback time on the gray water system?
It all depends on how aggressive of a system that you implement. I mean, you could do full irrigation systems utilizing gray water or a percentage thereof. I really am sorry, I don't know the offhand, the numbers. Sorry about that.
Rough idea, like is it five years you get, you get paid back for what you're spending?
I really can't venture to guess.
How about the solar cells?
I can find out for you, though. I can find out for you, though.
How about the solar cells?
That's usually got about a 15- to 20-year payback. What we're finding now, though, is that in that 15 to 20 years, a lot of our consultants are telling us that the design of the panel systems by then will be so far advanced that the panels that you use to replace the panels that you're currently dealing with will be far more efficient. So you'll actually get a longer lifespan and a quicker payback.
By waiting to put the more modern panels in, or?
No, when you actually do have to replace the panels, which is about a 25- to 30-year lifespan on them. So that payback will actually change.
Okay.
Are you looking for solar panels for heating, or are you looking for hot water, or are you looking for energy?
Mostly for energy.
And then?
You don't use a lot of hot water at city halls, so what we're trying to do is utilize them mostly for energy.
But aren't we in a bad area for that particular?
Actually, you know what? I thought that originally as well, and we asked our consultant, and he said, no, that they would actually work if they were positioned correctly. And the positioning on top of the parking structure really is ideal, and we will be able to orient those perfectly. So the way the photovoltaic panels are done or manufactured lately is they're very, very sensitive. So even in low-light levels, they'll be able to produce energy.
And these would be on top of the parking structure?
As carports, correct, like the images that I showed there. And they're actually prefabricated systems. The companies that actually form the photovoltaic panels actually form the structures for the carports as well, so they come as integrated units.
Okay. Any other comments from council? Okay. Thank you, Rick.
Thank you.
I'm going to open this up. Public comment?
Mr. Mayor, one comment before Nancy starts. I'd like to introduce the 1952 Rose Queen.
Yeah, I knew you were going to get. It was very well done.
Well, now that you've done that, council member-
Boy, I just wanted to let everybody know that we're having a rose float, and Nancy can tell us what it's like if she has time at the end of her presentation.
Can I just do that at the beginning? No. Actually, what I was thinking when I saw Robin Sanders earlier from home before I came down here, one thing that crossed my mind as I was driving, if you, any of you, look at the Neiman Marcus Christmas catalog, they always have some very expensive, unusual thing that those who have everything can purchase. Why can't we advertise our purchase of a seat on the float as much the same way? This is something that those who have everything can now give something that can't get any other way. Just thought that was kind of one way to market it. There must be somebody who has everything out there that I don't know. So actually, I came to talk about the solar panels. I'm sure that won't be a surprise to you because you've heard me before, but I absolutely love the design that Rick has come up with. I think it's perfect because it's putting it on the parking garage where there are no shadows to cut down the amount of energy that you could claim from it. And if you have any doubts about the benefits educationally, just the right thing to do, the positive environmental example, I would like to suggest that you maybe bring in a study session with people from the solar energy industry. In fact, I talked with somebody today from the Sharp Electronics Corporation, the Solar Systems Division, and he said that the people you'd probably want to talk with are the installers because they know a lot about, it's important to get certain things installed a certain way. Maybe Rick has the same kind of information from his area, but it's exciting to think that you might be considering the solar panels, and I like the way that they have been designed. I think this is the way to go, and I encourage you very strongly to do that. So I hope we have, do have a chance to have a, either a study session or just a friendly conversation about it at some point. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I'd just like to make a comment that the building committee went on a, seemed like a forever tour. We left like seven in the morning.
Oh, God, it was fun.
It rained all day, but Nancy Skinner was on that tour with us, and it was a highly educational and very enlightening day looking at LEEDs certified buildings throughout Southern California.
I thank you for including me on that tour. That was very interesting.
No, it was great.
Thank you. Come on up.
My name is Bill Thomas. I live in Newport Beach. Just hearing your comments on the solar panels. I own a building on Newport Boulevard, and we get, we've got a solar system that covers half the parking lot and half the building, and we get about 85 percent of our electricity from the sun. And so I'll just vouch that it works very, very well. And if anybody wants to tour to our building, I'd be happy to do that.
What's the address of your building?
It's 1931 Newport Boulevard. It's on the, right near 19th and Newport Boulevard.
Okay. Thank you, Bill.
Sure.
Great, thanks. Anybody else?
Hi, my name is Dolores Otting. I live in Newport Beach, and I just want to thank Rick through this whole process. He's been quite a gentleman. He's been very positive. He's answered as many questions as he can, and I think he's just done a great job for us and for the city of Newport Beach. Thank you very much. Also, when it comes to the other restrooms, the kind that women use, are we going to, you know, have a two-pipe system where there'll be, you know, non-potable water that's used for the toilets that women use? Okay, because I know that other, you know, like other buildings in Florida, and I think even buildings in Irvine are now designed that way, so I didn't know if this would be one of those and if we would get extra credits there also. Thank you.
Well, it's reclaimed water. I'm not sure we can bring, if we can pipe reclaimed water here, that's our biggest issue. The urinals are waterless, they're chemical, so therein lies the difference. If we could pipe in reclaimed water, I think it'd be great. I'm not sure we can. And Dolores, I want to say thank you for thanking Rick. I'm the chairman of the building committee, and candidly, we have worked very, very hard. Rick, I think, has put his heart and soul into this building. I'll say it now that there has been published in the Daily Pilot a building that looks like a box. It's really, it's a terrible disservice to what we have ultimately designed. Yes, it is contemporary, but it is much more than a box, and I'm hopeful here shortly that we will have a rendering, and you will see what the committee has come up with. Personally, I think it's a very classy building, and with the LEED certification, it's even more so. And you made a comment that triggered a thought in my mind, and that is, it's been a fascinating process because we've been allowed to be creative and look forward instead of being defensive to what I think are minority citizen groups. And I had a meeting last week with the city of Irvine's mayor and a couple of people, and again, we sat here at this table, and they were talking about all the things that they're doing creative and innovative and wonderful to their city, and yet we find ourselves in a position not being able to do that. It seems like, and I'm trying to divorce myself from that. I'm going to say, as chairman of that committee, it's truly an honor to the citizens of this community, and if they see our final, when they see our final project, I think they're all going to be proud. I just hope that there is a political will to move forward with it. I'm fearful, because of the defensive mode that seems to prevail in this community, that that may not be, but I, for one, will continue to take the high road and the creative road to what I think is a desperate need for this city. All you've got to do is walk the outside of this building and see how poor shape it is in, and I just, to me, it bothers me to think that we're going to sit here for another winter and freeze every one of these people and have their little area heaters. And, you know, I can just anticipate accidents happening. I just, anyhow, Dolores, it triggered in me your positive thoughts about the creative process, and it's been a wonderful experience for me personally, and when you guys see this building, I think you'll all be proud.
Good. All right. Any other public comment? Okay, now I will close it. City manager, what do you expect from us?
I got what I expected.
Which is what? Nothing?
That's right.
All right, good. It's just a report and file at this point.
You were burly on to reaching that conclusion.
All right, good. All right. All right, it's fine. Thank you for coming.
Thank you, Rick, for your presentation.
That's good. All right. City clerk?
Supplemental item number 20 is resolution establishing the ad hoc Santa Ana Heights Community Center Committee.
Okay, who's giving the report on this?
Mr. Kiff.
Mr. Kiff?
Mr. Mayor and council members, this supplemental item is a request that you form a committee just of council members to negotiate along with staff the agreement that would spell out forth the relationship that the city would have with the YMCA for the Santa Ana Heights Community Center. It's as simple as that.
Well, but we'll also deal with dollar items, too? This doesn't deal with the redevelopment agency, it just deals with the terms of the governing instrument?
This would focus on any issue involving the community center. The operating agreement necessarily does affect the price of the building and the, we do have a tentative price for the land plus the building, but we would want the committee to be involved in that discussion as well.
Well, is the committee going to be involved with the design and cost, just, and all of that detail, or just in the inner workings between the YMCA and the city?
The focus is to participate in the inner workings of this agreement called the operating agreement between the city and the YMCA. We did bring the design to you last time, and I didn't hear any strong feelings either way about the design, so that design is marching forward. My hope for the council participation is specifically to develop that relationship between the YMCA and the city.
Let me be more specific. What about how it gets paid for? Is this committee going to address the redevelopment agency and how that money comes out of the redevelopment agency to pay for this?
That wasn't the intent of the committee. I think the full council would address that in context of the redevelopment agency transfer, should that occur.
All right, then let's go back to the building. Who, if the city is not doing it, who then is addressing the design issues of the facility?
Right now, the city staff and the YMCA staff are addressing the design issues with the residents of the community through the PAC. So we've had a number of public meetings. Councilmember Daigle has been at. We brought that to your attention at the last meeting, just the design of the building. We're ready to move to design development after concept plans, and now's the time when we need additional participation by the council.
Why wouldn't this committee deal with the PAC so that we end up getting what the PAC thinks they should be getting?
Well, I'm confident, the committee could do that. I'm confident that the PAC is satisfied with the concept plan and those initial designs, and I don't see the designs changing much from here. So in other words, I think now we're just down to the nitty-gritty of our relationship as the city government with the YMCA as our contractor to operate the building.
How does the city council get input from the PAC? Because we received input after this last meeting from the head of that PAC, who wasn't very pleased with our knowledge of the facility. How do we, how does that happen so we don't end up, okay, we've broken ground, and then there's no stopping what goes from there?
My intent is to use the three members of this committee to help improve that relationship with the PAC. I actually think the relationship is fairly strong right now, and I do think the building is exactly what the community wants. However, I just think I need, the council could be more involved at this point in that direct negotiation with the YMCA.
No, that's my point. My point was, would the committee be involved with the design, which ultimately means they will be involved with the PAC? So in other words, they will be the liaison between the full council and the PAC on issues not just as to the relationship with the YMCA and the city, but also the design and further detail for the build-out of the facility.
The more input, the better. Sorry, Homer.
We can do that, Mr. Mayor. I think we need to add some duties under the proposed resolution here that would allow that to happen.
No, listen, I'm one person up here on, I'm just trying to really focus, not to expand the committee's work, but to make sure that, because this is a newly annexed area, that the PAC feels like they have input on this, and that Councilman Daigle, whose district it is, has appropriate, you know, committee action on this. So quite frankly, I'll give it to you, Councilman Daigle.
Well, I think what, part of this is to form a basis of support that is broader than myself. You know, I'm simply one council member, and I think by having three council members that are very knowledgeable of the issues up there, that's, I think, very helpful to the process. And I think interacting with the PAC, they're newly annexed members of our community, I think that's positive as well. So I would support that, and I think we talked about some suggestions for staffing that committee as well.
That's good. Any other questions for Mr. Kiff? Okay. Councilman Daigle, you want to make a motion to get us started? In other words, to approve action, to start this committee, who might be on it, and then if you want to expand the duties?
Okay, I'll take a stab at that. Maybe Dave can help me with that one. I think in terms of the membership, I've had conversation with Councilman Webb and Councilman Ridgway. They both are interested in participating. I welcome their participation and expertise.
Okay, what about the duties, Mr. Kiff?
I think you might want to add a duty in the resolution that said the committee could participate in or improve the communications associated with the design, the continued development of the design for the building.
And also interact with the PAC?
That's what I meant, improve communication. So you could specify the PAC as the, I would add the community and the PAC, because I think there are a few members of the community that we've missed.
I think that's very important.
Would that also, community, PAC, and YMCA?
I think the YMCA is really up to speed, obviously, but the-
They always work.
The YMCA would be our negotiating partner.
Right. That's good. Okay, we have a second for that?
Second.
Okay, we have a second. Any other council comment?
And that second, our motion in second also includes the members of that-
Includes the members. Includes the members and expanded duty for the committee. Okay, we'll open up to the public. Okay, I'm going to close it. I'm going to bring it back to the council. Any comment?
I just really appreciate Councilman Webb and Councilman Ridgway wanting to be involved with this. I know everyone's really swamped right now with a lot going on, so I appreciate that you'll be spending some time on these issues. Thank you.
I appreciate the appointment. I would say, for a year as a mayor, I interface with the YMCA and on that property and the supervisors. So I do have some background on it, but not new background like you do.
Okay, good. Let's vote.
Motion carries.
Dave, city clerk?
Item number four, or I'm sorry, item number six, amendment to professional services agreement for preparation of sequod documents for a project on West Coast Highway at Dover Drive.
Mr. Nichols?
I pull this, yes. The, this is, I would like to get from staff some idea of the size of this project and how far it goes down the block and where it is, so that people are somewhat aware of it. It's a pretty good-sized project, and we're asking that it go out, I understand, for analysis to be, come back as a mitigated negative deck, which means that it's going to slip through pretty fast in the process. So I wanted people to understand what the project is and what it entails. It seems like it's a fairly large project to have a negative deck, but I guess that's to be decided later, but I think we should have some idea of the project, and it is coming up and what it is.
Mr.?
Yes?
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor. While I appreciate Mr. Nichols' request, and I don't think it's totally unreasonable, but you have to focus your attention. This is just a public, or professional services contract. For those in the audience, in the TV audience, at the corner of Dover and PCH, there is proposed, and I believe they have rights by zoning, for a 56,000-square-foot commercial project, and I believe it goes from Dover all the way up to McDonald's, does it not?
Yes, it does.
And they're going to close off a number of driveways now. It has not been approved. This is just a negative deck contract, and that's all it is. And so I think we need to focus our attention on that. Clearly, the project will have to go through rigorous process, both at the planning commission, I assume, at local homeowners association- I assume at local homeowners associations, and ultimately to the planning, or to the city council. So if your intent, Mr. Nichols, is to-
Well, my question is, does this have underground parking or parking, or how do they handle their parking? Is this a multi-story building that they're proposing on it?
Well, it's not the subject, that's an improper question at this point in time. I just say it's a professional-
Well, we know it's 56,000 square feet or something like that, it's a pretty good-sized building. There must be some initial design to have it analyzed, right?
Yeah, there's a complete application on file in the planning department, and anyone can go look at the site plan, the elevations.
Well, that's what I'm asking, to have just fraud made public. And it seems like it's certainly in a-
It is public. It's public because it's been filed. What's before us tonight is a professional services agreement, not the project.
And actually, just an amendment to an agreement that the council has already approved.
Okay.
Are we obligate, I mean, I would think that we are obligated, I'm asking for confirmation, to move the project forward in the process, and part of that being retaining the contract for an environmental analysis.
Well, yes, property owners have the right to file applications, and we have a duty to process them and give them their environmental review and-
And we don't have a duty to tell what it is. Is this a commercial project?
It's a retail project, 56,000 square feet, and the parking, I know, is below the retail space. I can't remember if it's below ground or tuck-under parking. And the review items are a development plan review, because on Mariners Mile, that's a special requirement. There's a traffic phasing ordinance, traffic study being done, and there is a use permit to exceed the base height limit. And all of those things will be reviewed at a public hearing at the planning commission along with the environmental document. And on these applications, the planning commission has authority to make the decisions, so they wouldn't come to the city council unless there's an appeal.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Webb?
In addition to that, the proponent for the project has had a number of meetings with adjoining neighbors and community associations to discuss the project related to the impacts it might potentially have, and get input of what they would like to see, so that this is not something that is not going to be discussed quite extensively when it gets to the public hearing process. And the proponent is actively trying to meet with the public. And so this is really, this amendment relates to additional traffic studies that have been needed to satisfy Caltrans on the review of a potential traffic signal that would be an entrance into the project. And it does have subterranean parking, which is above the water table but below the street level.
But it is not a zone change?
No.
It is not a general plan amendment?
No.
It is not a green light mandated item to be voted on?
Correct.
All right, so three, so here three things do apply. In other words, no green light, no general plan amendment, no zone change?
Correct.
If I remember correctly, if you could look at the various, the existing zoning for the project, I think that the existing zoning for the project would allow almost double the square footage of what's being asked for. And again, discussion of square footage is access, parking is improper. This is, this is a professional services agreement.
Okay, Ms. Nichols?
My only question is, as I understand, we're also asking for a third lane along PCH in there?
I'll have to echo, that's not, that's not the item on this agenda. It's outside, it's outside the agenda offer. No, it's not part of the agenda item, I apologize.
No, it's not that, but we're asking for that as part of the mitigating circumstance on this project, are we not?
And so that will be proper to discuss when the environmental document and the proposed mitigation measures are on an agenda.
Okay, as far as we can go.
Very good.
Okay, any other council comment? Okay, do we have, do we have a motion on the action?
I move that we approve the amendment number one, and operate the city manager to sign the agreement.
Second.
Second, okay, we have, we have a motion, we have a second. Now I will bring it to the public, public comments open.
Good evening, my name is Dolores Otting, I live in Newport Beach, I'm a member of EQUAC, the Environmental Quality Affairs Committee. Not that we've had a meeting in a while, but we still have a committee. And here as just a resident of Newport Beach. A scope of work and a schedule of compensation, this is on the first page of the document, last paragraph, a scope of work and a schedule of compensation for additional tasks necessary to complete the initial study and mitigate a negative declaration are included in amendment number one to professional services agreement attached. The expanded tasks and associated costs are as follows. And on the next page, it talks about a traffic impact analysis for $32,000, air quality analysis for $1,000, noise analysis for $1,750, an environmental analysis for $9,000, which I don't know what that means, because I thought the whole thing was an environmental analysis, graphics for $755, and a project coordination for $1,750 to total 4,000, I mean, $46,455, which I guess is a total of $110,000, to RFB, the consultant. And that is paid for by the person that wants to do the project, correct? Not by the city? And, because they pay the city back. An item that I think that I would like added to this, or maybe this will come on the environmental checklist, is the impact emergency response, impact to emergency response. I live on the other side of this, so do a lot of people. I live in Councilmember Heffernan's district, and there might be a time when we want to get to Hoag Hospital, okay? And what this project is proposing because of traffic impacts, okay, more traffic is going to be another signal. And so my concern, of course, which isn't on this list, and so I want this addressed, is the emergency response. Just like how you people had this fake-like thing that could happen in the city, and you prepared for it, I'd like some fake times with another traffic signal put there, and how much longer it's going to take to get people to Hoag Hospital. I know, you want to turn me off because it's not part of it, okay? But in the meantime, it's part of what an impact analysis and what a negative, and what a mitigated negative declaration. My question is, you haven't even done the initial study, yet you already know that you're going to do a mitigated negative deck. So maybe you won't in the end, maybe there will be a full pack impact analysis, but I really think that people deserve a little better than this. This was on the consent calendar before. It's a large project for Pacific Coast Highway. Then you want to do the general plan update and add more homes down there? We won't be able to get to a hospital. I mean, that's, that's one of the things that you need to look at when you want to keep adding traffic in this city, is emergency response for children on bicycles that might get in an accident and need to show up at Hoag, okay? So I just want that addressed, and I'm sorry if I'm a little bit upset about it, but it's just an important thing. So thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
One comment related to the traffic signals. While traffic signals may have some slowing of traffic, the technology now has a preemption system that allows the emergency vehicles to get an automatic green light when they approach the signals, and that greatly improves the circulation through the traffic signals.
Okay, public comment is open? All right.
Just one more, John, and that is, is this come back to EQUAC?
Wait a second, let's, let's close public comment. Ms. Nichols, go ahead.
Will this come back to EQUAC?
EQUAC's resolution says that they review draft EIRs, they do not review negative declarations.
So this will never come to EQUAC? This bypasses EQUAC because you've made the decision that it's a negative deck? Who makes that decision?
Staff makes the initial decision as we start to receive preliminary technical studies from the applicant. We receive the complete application, we have an idea of what the impacts are likely to be. And then we retain the consultant, and it helps us to have an idea of whether we're talking about a negative declaration or an EIR, so that we know what the scope of services with this consultant will be. And then they prepare the initial study and the environmental document we've agreed on. If along the way, additional impacts are discovered that we didn't anticipate, we will change course and go to an EIR. If the draft-
But that's totally a staff decision.
At that point. When the draft negative declaration is released and we receive public comments that shows that there are significant impacts that we hadn't anticipated or can't be mitigated, at that point, an EIR could be prepared. Or when it gets to public hearing, if the planning commission or city council doesn't think that the negative declaration is the appropriate document, they don't have to approve it, they can direct that an EIR be prepared.
But I guess my specific point is, is the negative declaration itself an action item by the planning commission?
Yes, it is.
So that's one, it's a condition of approval?
It's an action that's taken, well, it's actually one of the findings in the resolution of approval.
Right, that's my point, all right. Okay, any other comment here? Okay, let's vote.
With Councilmember Nichols abstaining, the motion carries.
Okay, city clerk?
Item number seven is a Corona Del Mar State Beach Improvements Project Update, amendment number three to professional services agreement, construction services and funding.
Ms. Nichols, I think you pulled that.
There is discussion in here, and I believe it's totally proper, that we get an update on the project. And the discussion discusses frequently asked questions, which is how the project is going, what is it going to block, what does it look like, what happened to the volleyball courts, these kind of questions, and I would like to get an update from staff on what it looks like and so forth. I do understand that there are pictures on the web, and the web pictures, when I overlay them, do not seem to indicate that it's going as far out onto the sand as we see it. And I, I think our neighbors and so forth have asked me to try and find out what is happening. I would like staff to review what's happening.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Batum, and I did meet Councilman Nichols at the site yesterday, and we walked the site, but based upon his request, we'll have Dave Kiff walk through a PowerPoint as to what the project actually does, and then we will deal specifically with the volleyball court and other issues.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members. I'm going to go through a brief PowerPoint. I know I say that each time, but this is actually like about seven slides. And I'm going to focus a lot on what the project looks like, or will look like, and then the concerns that Councilmember Nichols and others have raised with us about volleyball specifically. So we're going to cover a quick reminder, what's the project? And then just to note that this, this item has come before the council nine times already, this will be the 10th time, just because I, folks have alleged that this has been a secretive process, and I guess I would gently beg to differ. And then I'm going to show you some maps and overlays that show the before-construction status and then the post-construction status. And then Marie and I will talk about how volleyball is affected, and then offer a last slide as how folks who are interested can continue to participate in these discussions. So the approved project, just again, remember, this is a facility that was built in, the date is more than 45 years old in terms of its structure, so among other things, we didn't have enough restrooms. So we're going to go from 10 for women to 24 when it's done. For men, it'll be six to eight. There will be a lifeguard and a tide pool concession facility combined. That concession facility today, actually before it was torn down, was 2,400 square feet. It'll go down to 1,000 square feet. And that increase, that decrease will be somewhat offset by an addition of 646 square feet for the lifeguard facility and 177 square feet for the, to coordinate the tide pool ranger program, because as folks know, that's the home base. That's where they'll get sometimes 300 and 400 kids a day in the spring. There'll be less overall building area when this is done and less building frontage, and you can see the square footage difference. The top line there, the 9,200 square feet is the building area that was before Labor Day, and at project completion will be 5,600. And the buildings are angled such that the folks who live in Corona Del Mar will get a slightly better view, less buildings blocking them. And there'll also be an entry remodel, so the vehicle, vehicles can turn around more easily, including buses. There will be improved hardscape and softscape, walkways, a landscape promenade, and the landscaping goes from 17,000 square feet to roughly 30,000 square feet, and it'll include a new parking lot kiosk. So let's look at the maps next. This is what Corona Del Mar State Beach looked like from above before Labor Day. And I'm going to overlay with the project boundaries on top of that. And you can see, I'm going to go back and forth a little bit here again, so before and then after. You can see that the angularity of the, of the design has changed. We're proposing something with gentler curves, and that actually does increase some of the hardscape. You can see some areas where it goes, the beach sand will be increased. And overall, this is, this project has no net loss of sand square footage. And I just wanted to make sure everybody was clear on that. That was a condition of our coastal development permit. So again, one more time for the folks at home, that's before, and that's after. So what's up with volleyball? Well, the current construction work clearly means that there are fewer volleyball courts during construction, and this is why, among other reasons, we wanted to do this in the offseason. The construction period is, was roughly September 12th, Steve can correct me, and we're hoping to be done in April or May, so that our heavy season will have full access, everyone will have full access to that beach and its amenities. There are 10 courts before construction. We intend to have five courts during construction, so during the winter months. And in addition, we just want to point out, there are 58 other courts along our beaches to accommodate volleyball needs, and I'll show you where those are in the next slide. And again, the ending footprint will have no net loss of sand space, but it will likely lead to a change in the court and fire ring layouts. And that's because of the bullet on the bottom there, because eight of the 10 courts are in a row, and that's, it will be impossible for us to retain that row after construction. So Marie's Department, Recreation and Senior Services, is going to be taking the lead on working with the volleyball community to establish those new layouts, and our goal is to keep the same number of courts as before, and we think we can do that. But again, the configuration might change. So just so you know, folks at home, there, these are the 58 other spaces that folks can have beach volleyball. There's, most of them are obviously all on the ocean side, we've got one on the sand side there, sorry, on the bayside, all the way from the Santa Ana River down to the wedge. And then again, you'd add these to the now five courts at CDM State Beach, and hopefully going back up to 10. And with that, for folks at home, this is how to continue to get, stay involved in this issue. The material is up on our website, you can give Recreation and Senior Services a call, and then you can email us if you're interested in getting on a, sort of an interested parties' email list to stay abreast of this. And with that, I turn it back to you, Mr. Mayor, and recognizing that Steve's here and Marie's here for further questions.
Okay, city council, questions for staff? Ms. Nichols?
Basically, could we go back to the slide that, where you did your overlay? What I'd like to point out is that if you look at the previous, which is relatively the yellow lines-
Sorry, I'll leave that back.
Okay.
There you go.
The center part, right in where he had the arrow, is moved out approximately 100 feet, well beyond the volleyball, or they're right at the volleyball court limit that goes across the beach. In fact, they're right at where the, where the nets would be. Now, the cutback in here, I, that's apparent on that slide. It certainly isn't apparent from the design, because the, it seems, at least looking at the design, that the restroom facility comes out much further than what you have there. Now, are you sure your overlay is correct?
No, I'm pretty darn sure it's correct. Steve, if you have a comment or two, this is an approved plan.
Yep.
This is what they're building to.
This plan came directly from the CAD drawings that produced the construction documents that the contractor is currently using.
If you would take the front of the checkered portion and project that back to where the rocks are, or at the end, right at the edge, that virtually is the straight line that you have about three more volleyball courts to your right there. And the, the building- And the building that's the restroom projects out far enough that it's in the way of the volleyball courts as they are standing today, because they have a power line that's along there, and that power line definitely impinges in the courts, and there wasn't room to back it up to the structure that they were showing as their wall. Now, am I wrong? You were there with me, Steve.
The power lines that are out there today are purely temporary.
I understand that, but was there room between that and what they had as the wall, the sea wall, that was going up that far back?
Well, we didn't look specifically at those locations, but it is roughly in that general vicinity. It's a straight, more of a straight line, though. It doesn't follow the, you can see how that there's kind of a curve shaped on the left side there. The power line is actually a straight, kind of a straight shot. I should also add, and I don't think it was mentioned, that our General Services folks are out there this week, and they're going to put three temporary courts back in that general area, a little farther out.
So they're gonna be up in that corner?
Yeah. Read the pointer. Dangerous, I have the wrong guy with the pointer.
If you can see these paint lines right now, that's where the existing courts and pools are. So right now, General Services is gonna put about three more in this area right here. There are also two courts down in this area that don't show up. Those remain today and are being played on at, you know, on a regular basis. So we will have five of the 10 courts, hopefully by the end of this week, in operation temporarily, until we do our analysis of reconfiguring and where the amenities should go afterwards.
Well, can we get the volleyballers involved in this? So far, they haven't been able to involve themselves at all.
Well, a little history, when this project first began coming before the council, and the first renderings looked a little bit different than this, the architect's plan did include some options for the reconfiguring of the volleyball courts and the fire pits. However, those two issues became very contentious and sort of took the eye off the ball, so to speak, and the conversations drifted more towards that, which really had nothing to do with the construction project. So what we told the volleyball community then, and have been telling them quite often in the last two years, is that we will wait until this construction project has begun to see where the fencing will impact current volleyball, where the final project will impact, and then we will be doing some community meetings, which we will be having mid-November with the volleyball community. At that time, though, we will also be looking at a few other things to consider. It is not just about one special interest group and where the volleyball community would like the volleyball courts to go. We have to consider not only that, but the fire rings. We also have to consider public safety access. Our lifeguards on a regular basis at this beach are asked to mitigate problems between the volleyball players and the beachgoers, and they don't need to be doing that. That's not their focus. Their focus should be on safety. So we want to make sure what we reconfigure takes all of these things into consideration. We certainly will be involving the volleyball community. They've been told this. We had a community meeting in spring of this year, in April of this year. This was discussed at that time. They were told at that time that when we begin to start this process, they will be involved. We've been taking an interest list. We're just not at that point yet, and we will be in mid-November.
This, it's very much necessary that they get involved now. And the other aspect we have is the green areas around these restrooms, and the big one on the end there are gonna have mounded areas in them. Maybe you can explain the thoughts on that and...
Steve, I don't know the thoughts behind the mounded green areas. I can only explain the volleyball areas.
Well, I guess, if you look at the existing drawing, you'll see to the left side, there is a substantial green area, and I guess it was the intent to replace that green grass area, because some folks come to the beach and don't want to sit in the sand. We're essentially trying to duplicate what's already out there in the way of usable space in a little different configuration. The mounting is just something that the architect threw in, I guess to give a little more, maybe you can sit on the grass and maybe you can actually see the ocean a little better. It's only two to three feet, so it's not a real huge change up on that.
I think the community basically would like to preserve the beaches much as possible, and we'd really like to see some sand on it. The sand there is such that when you scratch the surface, about three inches down, you hit wet sand. And that's been a dry sand beach, not a wet sand beach, for many, many years. And we are gradually losing enough sand that you can't, can't do that anymore, and that's not normally what you'd like for your volleyball courts either, or for recreation on us. We're still charging people who come down the full amount. How would the buses get over? They would come around there and then go park as they do now?
I think it's difficult to see. We did this slide mostly so you can see the outline of the current area versus the new area, but you're gonna have to help me on this one. I believe there's a turnaround in here for the buses. Is that correct?
Yeah, we increased the size of the turnaround, so it would accommodate the buses that come down the hill, so they won't have to pull into the parking lot area and get tangled up. They could easily do a drop-off. There's also essentially like a bypass lane for those folks that are dropping off and those folks that come down and get out rather quicker. So there's less traffic congestion at the ticket booth, so folks can get in and out much easier.
Steve, aren't there two separate lanes, one kind of for buses and one for cars?
Right, that's correct. Like, as I said, the bypass lane concept, so if someone's pulled over to the curb, a bus or even a car, there's a way to get by.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I actually have a question. This project is approved, it's under construction, we've had 10 meetings, there is no net loss of sand area. Mr. Nichols, what is, what is it that you want here? You're complaining and criticizing, but...
Basically, the volleyball courts are unusable totally right now.
Well, it's in construction phase. How many times do you want the, Mr. Kiff, to say that?
The construction phase, if it just involves this, does not involve the whole beach by any means. Yet every volleyball court was destroyed. Now, is there some reason why? This seems almost a punitive...
Let me make a comment. According to the testimony I've heard, by this weekend, there will be five operable volleyball courts. And when the project is complete, they will attempt to put all 10 back. I mean, don't you listen, or don't you believe these people? Somehow, there's this skepticism here, and I don't understand the skepticism.
I guess my question is, is that we've asked about the volleyball courts, and until now, we haven't had any. We've got the two way down on the end that we've had for years. That's the only volleyball courts on the facility.
Well, they're gonna have five by this weekend, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
And we have 58 along the oceanfront, so that there's no lack of volleyball courts in the city of Newport Beach. I'm sure that even on the busiest weekend during the winter, that you can go to almost any volleyball court along the peninsula and get on it.
That's true, and the peninsula is about 25 minutes from this by driving on a weekend. So it's not as easily to get to, nor is there parking down there. And I understand that now these Orange Street volleyball courts that were supposed to replace these, the people are not too happily received when they're using them down there, because they're, seems to be causing traffic jams and, well, they just don't need any more traffic down on that area. Isn't that also something that we're aware of?
So what's your point?
Well, my point is, is I'm very pleased to see that we're talking about getting five volleyball courts. This is something that, as a community, we have enjoyed. This isn't something that we think is a problem. We think this is an amenity. The kids that are playing them are, they're excellent athletes, they've had semi-pro tournaments down there, that our locals actually win these tournaments and get, and place in them, which are very tough to do in Southern California. And I would like to see possibly even some increase in the amount of sand that we have there, particularly up near the rocks. I do not see that we're making any useful use of that, and it would, it would open up a little more beach. The other thing is, it's very, very evident that we need more sand on the beach so that we can properly do this.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Mayor, I have a question.
Go ahead. Councilman Diggle.
Dave, I had a question for you. I like the title, "What's Up With Volleyball?", and I'd ask, what's up with the fire rings, and are there any opportunities here? And some of our residents really have issues with these fire rings. They trip over them, people throw bottles and trash into them, other people step on the gra, on the glass, sometimes the embers stay hot, you know, people are burning themselves and so on and so forth. Is there opportunity here to maybe displace some of the fire rings and place volleyball courts? And, I mean, could the Coastal Commission see that, you know, if it's a volleyball versus fire ring, or do they really have a preference for a fire ring?
I think that Coastal Commission tends to have a preference for both, so I, that's the, I think we could have a dialogue with them to talk about increasing the number of volleyball courts, maybe at the expense of some fire rings. It'll be a difficult conversation, but I think we should at least give that a shot.
I would like to also point out that this has been an ongoing thing. When we first opened this up to do this work, we just cordoned it all off, and we had no access to the entire beach through the middle. We only had access around the two ends, and initially, we did not have access big enough to get our service vehicles in to collect the waste that accumulates in the trash containers or to pick up or process any of the sand to try and get it clean. And so it was with some degree of difficulty that we got an entrance through the middle to the right, to the right of the present Coast Guard, I mean, the lifeguard stand. And what I'm interested in doing is servicing our community and allowing them to use it. We had, under those conditions, when we finally got the center through, the sandcastle contest. So we really showed our people what a wonderful facility we had, and I'm pleased that we got it cleaned up some before then, because it was in a mess, but I...
I think you're right, that the demolition phase was very messy, obviously. That's what demolition's all about. Steve might be able to correct me if I'm wrong, but I think there was a period of time where they didn't want people wending their way through there just because it was demolition. But as soon as we moved into more actual constructing things, we could allow better access.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. W... Again, I would recommend, point out that our item on the agenda is a proven amendment to a professional services agreement and construction services, as well as a budget amendment, and it's not an element that we should be redesigning the whole contract. I would suggest that all of these are construction-related items that should be discussed, not at a public council meeting, but at, with the staff, and if there are problems related to specific elements, the staff can solve those problems. It's not something that we should be redesigning a project at a city council meeting after it's already been awarded, and telling a contractor and the public work staff how to adjust their fences to provide for safe construction operations. I know that the public work staff works very hard to try to accommodate as much as possible the community within the area, and so I would suggest that we move forward with the item on the agenda.
Are you moving it?
I move the recommended actions.
I'll second that.
Okay, Councilman Diggle.
I support that, but I, I understand where Councilman Nichols is coming from, in that residents and some of the volleyball players have been complaining. And so I know there's a field meeting today, which I think went a long way to try to resolve these issues, but certainly, you know, engineering can be engineering, and sometimes it's good to have some other inputs as well. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor? I would ask the city attorney to opine on a contract here, and we've gone into a full PowerPoint presentation on construction. Is that not a violation of the Brown Act? Quite candidly, we, this has not been agendized for this presentation, and I think we violated the act sufficiently. Would you opine on that, please?
To be honest, I thought that that was the item on the agenda, the presentation that we made, so I didn't realize this was just a, I mean, I didn't look at this contract item or this item on the agenda.
There is status report information in the body of the report.
And that's what we were discussing.
Okay. Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Selig? Yes? I actually have a question or two on the actual purpose of the agenda.
You're out of order.
That's out of order, called order.
You have the mic. Go ahead.
On the $43,000, I'm looking at, you're describing what the work is, and then I look on page three, and you describe what the contingencies is used for, and it seems that the $43,000 is describing exactly the types of things that usually come out of a contingency. And since it's a contract that's been awarded with the contingency attached to it, I guess I'm wondering why the $43,000 isn't coming out of the contingency.
Mr. Batum?
Mr. Mayor and Council, effectively, it is. When we originally asked to award this project, we were looking for a 10% number, which was $400,000 for contingency. And unfortunately, at the time, I did not realize that we had not already accounted for the geotechnical services. So what we're asking, really asking for tonight is to fund the geotechnical services, the money owed to the architect for, for last-minute changes in the design, which amounted to a total of about $100,000, and that would leave $300,000, which represents about 7.5% as a construction contingency.
So you mean that not only this $43,000, but the rest of the architect's fee is coming out of the, out of the contingency? If you get $400,000 contingency?
That's correct.
How come the architect's fee wasn't in the original deal that we approved?
I guess the way to explain that is that a lot of work was done, for the benefit of Councilman Selig, who probably wasn't on the council at the time, there had been a lot of redesign going on with this project to try to hold the costs down, and there were a lot of changes that occurred also due to the Coastal Commission input, as well as input from state parks, because remember, this is still a state park, and we operate it. So they had some say in how things went together, and there were some disputes regarding how the ticket booth could be designed and if it could include a restroom, which was ultimately deleted. There were some other changes that were made as well, that required our civil engineer to do some substantial redo of some of the site plans. So this project has had quite a few changes, and what we're asking for is essentially to kind of catch up on those changes.
And so what do you anticipate, then, the $300,000 contingency going for? Do you have any...
Well, hopefully, we won't need it at all. We try to hold those costs down as best we can, but, you know, there are always things that are unanticipated. If we, during the trenching process, if we run into debris or something that requires additional effort on the contractor, it's hard to say. During the process, there may be some things that were omitted in the design or things that not, weren't anticipated, some minor changes, and we hope to hold those down, but we'd like to have some contingency in case those things do appear, and that way, we don't have to stop the project in order to come back and get authorization for additional funds.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Ms. Nichols?
I just have one other thing, and that is, we talked about this lifeguard station being manned, but in the description here, it says that, "Why is the city using up all the sand area?" Actually, "The redevelopment will reduce the number of buildings from six to four, provide office and injury treatment space for lifeguards, and a marine life refuge supervisor." And I've never heard of that position. Is this a new position that we've created? And what does he do?
She has been working for the city for about five years, and she coordinates the city's, before you came on council, Mr. Nichols, there was great concern about scavenging of the tide pools, and the city council entered into a grant program which funds her salary upwards of 2/3 to supervise the people that come down to the tide pools, especially the classrooms. And also, she trains what we call our tide pool rangers. We have about 20 people who will go out there at low tide, actually, one person of the 20, will go out at low tide and keep people from scavenging the tide pools. 20, will go out at low tide and keep people from scavenging the tide pools. And again, her home base is Corona del Mar State Beach. Right now, she operates out of her car trunk. So, we want an area where she could store educational materials and meet the kids, and provide a little bit of first aid and snacks for them, et cetera.
But if she's on the main beach, then she's not really on the tide pool beach, little corum.
She does both. She walks over with the classes. That's her, she has everyone meet them there.
But we have people going between the classes, too, right?
That's correct. And that's what the tide pool rangers do. Her staff will go out at low tide during the worst scavenging periods and just stand there and greet people and tell them to dump their buckets.
Uh-huh.
Gently.
Okay, but she will be a permanent fixture on this? In other words, we're making office space for her?
Well, it's a space for her to store her equipment. It's not, she won't necessarily be engaged there. But if the program grows, I think it's probably appropriate that she be there. But, because right now, we can get, again, about 2,000 to 3,000 people in any one season, and sometimes 200 and 300 in one day.
We are seeing some, I'm getting complaints from neighbors of the buses when they don't turn off their engines, and they run them-
And she has them turn off her engines as best they can.
City Attorney, that's, we gotta bring this around.
This is off subject, Mayor.
Okay, good, all right.
Is there any public?
Wait, hold on, we'll close it off here. Let's bring the public. You want to add to this? Come on down. Love to hear from you. And what we're talking about are the contracts.
I'm going to introduce myself, and I'll get to the contract part. I'm Courtney Watson. I've lived in Corona del Mar and played volleyball at Corona del Mar State Beach since 1970. I appreciate the chance to speak briefly. In prior meetings we've attended, we've been told it's either just about the architecture or just about the class is moving. So, I'm going to really briefly just get a word in. We appreciate the five courts coming back in right away. That's great. We'd love to have 10. The reason we like those 10 courts and not the 58 others is Corona del Mar is less windy, it has more parking, and it's always been just better for volleyball than the peninsula. So, we'd love to keep the courts there. We'd love to be involved with the city when they do go to outreach and try to plan where to put the courts. The reason we wanted to get involved early was because volleyball, fire pits, and the entrance to the harbor don't go together. So, by putting the building right where the volleyball courts are, excuse me, it'll be tough to coordinate putting the volleyball courts. Balls can't go into the fire rings, and they can't go into the entrance to the harbor. So, anyway, I thank you for your time. We'd love to be involved. Keep us posted. Thank you.
Marie Knight, right there.
Yeah, I agree. I have a petition signed by almost 100 players in just one morning that were interested in being involved in the planning for the courts.
Marie Knight.
Thank you.
Thank you. Who else would like to come down? Thank you.
Tom Billings. I'm just now learning the details of this project. And you could say that's my fault, we've been told, it's been going on for some time. But my buddy Gary, who's from Corona del Mar back here, first time he's heard about 10 volleyball courts being removed, and I think a lot of other people in the city. Twice, I heard Mr. Kiff, who I've had a few exchanges of emails, say, "Well, hopefully, we'll get back to 10." You know, hopefully. Here's another, this is another classic example of, just like the city hall, where you'll design it, build it, and then we'll get input. Yeah, you've had some input along the way from the residents. But it sounds to me, from what I'm hearing, that you've decided to go with this design, where you push out on the beach with this, whatever you're doing there, restrooms and building. And you're going to reconfigure the beach and put volleyball courts later, yet you have volleyball players now, after the fact, saying, "Hey, wait. You know, we don't want to lose this beach, and we want to retain the 10 courts." There's no guarantee that you are going to, like I said, I heard him say, "Well, hopefully." I'm also just speaking as a citizen who, over the years, for the last 30, 40 years, I've gone down and used the fire rings. And I've also played volleyball on those courts. And they're a big deal down there. A lot of families, church groups, youth groups, love those courts. And yeah, you can reconfigure them, you can change them around, but it's kind of an identity, the character of that beach, the way it's configured. That's just my opinion. And I would, you know, appreciate, well, it sounds like it's a done deal, unfortunately, at this point. And then, I just want to speak to the cost. $4 million. You know, again, I don't know the history. Dave shared some more information I didn't know about on the cost. Originally, I understand this was started off as a renovation of the restrooms in the location they're at now. And then, it changed and evolved into this bigger project. I know Councilman Selich and Councilman Nichols both voted against that expenditure. And I respect their views. I'd like to find out more when I talk to them individually. But, you know, it's just the process, once again, that concerns me. And it's obviously too late. It's, you've gone ahead with it. But I guess, in summary, I'd like to see more outreach. Ask the residents what they want first. Okay, sure, you need maybe more space, more building, but you're changing the beach, as Mr. Nichols pointed out. And I'd like to see it not be changed. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Come on down.
I'm Matt Cox. I've been a resident at Corona del Mar for over 52 years. I'm sorry about my attire. I just found out about this just a little while ago. Anyway, I sure appreciate everybody's, you know, concern, Dick Nichols and everybody, to make sure the courts stay in. And I just remember that back in the '70s, there used to be four courts down at the east end or the south end. But the beaches are eroded, we barely have two down there now. And the beach just seems to be getting smaller all the time. You know, 10 months out of a year, there's plenty of room. It's a ghost town down there. And then, two months out of a year, July and August, it's pretty booked up. And it's, and, you know, a lot of people enjoy that beach. And again, I think it's a great thing. The beach is, you know, getting renovated and all that. And there's a lot of good stuff going on down there. And, you know, anytime there's change, everybody freaks out. A lot of people enjoy the beach, and there's the community and everything. So, I think what I'm saying is, hope the courts stay in there, and everybody enjoys the beach like we have been for years. I know Dick Nichols is always down there and stuff. And that's it.
Okay, thank you. Come on down.
Bill Thomas, live in Newport Beach. I've been playing volleyball down at Corona del Mar for about 20 years. And it, I just want to emphasize, it is unique, other than the peninsula. The peninsula has courts, there's pairings of two or four, maybe, somewhat together. But in Corona del Mar, there is the eight courts that are together. And it's a, it's very social, that people will come down there, knowing that they can get a game. And it's not, it's different than on the peninsula. And also, what Corky was saying, that since Corona del Mar faces south, the wind is different because you have the bluffs in the background. So, the wind goes up over the beach, so there's less wind on the beach. And that's why, for volleyball, it really is a unique spot. And that's why we're concerned about it. And we look forward to speaking with Marie Knight and Dave Kiff, and see if we can work out an arrangement to have all 10 courts.
Great. Q? Chief Riley, you want to speak on this? No, okay. All right, any other public comment? No. Mr. Kiff, do you want to add anything?
I don't want to prolong your meeting anymore, or get in more trouble with Robin, but Mr. Billings-
Well, you don't have to add anything.
I do want to add something. Mr. Billings mentioned outreach, and the city doesn't always do a good job with outreach. I recognize that. A shitty staff doesn't. And I take blame for that sometimes. This time, though, I thought we did a pretty darn good job. If folks will remember, we did a complete blanket mailing to everybody who lived on this side of Coast Highway in Corona del Mar. And that mailing was a detailed letter with a survey that folks could fill out and mail back in, or fill out online. And we, then we took all the survey results, compiled them, posted on the web, emailed everybody that informed us about it. And then, we actually had a town meeting at the library, where people saw different designs and looked at what the survey said. So, we really did go out of our way in throughout this process, and then the nine council meetings, and not to mention PBNR and the other groups that saw this, to make sure that people knew about the project. So, we can't always make sure everybody does know, but I thought we gave it a pretty darn good try this time.
Okay, thank you. Okay, let's vote.
With Councilmember Nichols voting no, the motion carries.
Okay, City Clerk?
Item number 10, Analysis of Police Operations, July 4, 2005.
Okay, I called this matter up. And given the hour and the fact that the marathon is waited, I could pass on any report altogether. I just opened up the public comment, send the chief home. Anybody else? Anybody want to hear it?
I'll second that motion.
Yeah.
Do you want to hear it, Mr. Ridgeway? Okay. Okay, then, I'm sorry to even have you wait this long. Okay, I have to open up the public comment, since it is, since we've done it. Seeing no one. Is there any, is there any action item here? It's not.
I think that the chief is, and the police department is to be complimented on-
Oh, very much so.
-the operations. And I think that one of the items in the report was that there seemed to be more compliance with the law this year than there have been in the past. And I think that indicates that they did a really great job.
Well, and I think the report is, speaks for itself. I did spend part of that day with Tom Gacy down there. It didn't look a lot different, but everybody was pretty well behaved. Certainly was a lot of people.
I visited it, too, for about an hour and a half.
Good, and you weren't arrested, either of you. Good. All right, that's great.
Don was, I wasn't.
All right, thank you, chief. Sorry to make you wait. Okay, City Clerk?
Item number 14 is the city council gold sponsorship of second annual OC Marathon to be held Sunday, January 8, 2006.
I pulled this item. I think it's appropriate for this type of expenditure that we have a full hearing. And, same age, who's going to give it?
Well, I think maybe the best thing to do is start off with a presentation from Bill Sumner.
Great, thanks. Thank you for waiting. You're a crowd pleaser. You can tell, you thinned out the crowd.
I thinned out the crowd. They knew I was coming.
Ah, they're practicing. They're probably jogging home.
Before we get going on this item, and I have no financial interest in this, but I do want to announce to council and to citizens that I am a board member, a founding board member of the Orange County Marathon. I meet with Bill about one time a month, and-
At least.
At least, yeah, and numerous phone calls. But again, I'm just a volunteer out there on this project.
So, no conflict?
Financial interest, no.
No, no conflict. All right, you have seven votes, then.
I want to thank you all for taking your time to meet with me. I didn't realize that you guys did all this stuff on a weeknight, so it's all news to me. I brought you some posters. And what I, the reason I brought the posters is because this is the second annual. And I want you to notice that Newport Beach, City of California. I also brought a couple of brochures from this year's event. And the reason I brought the, I brought, I brought one for each of you. What I'd like you to do is take a look at this, and because one of the things is, is we started this event, I took over the event, Todd was already on the event. I was kind of a backseat consultant when they brought me up to be the race director. So, about 10 months before the event, which we had last December, they brought me on board to put on this race. And for those of you who don't know, I'm the Corona del Mar High School track and field coach. Been there for about 22 years.
And the number one rated cross-country team in the U.S. present time?
World.
In the world.
World.
I'll let you say that.
Okay. We have the number one team in the United States.
I think we have a gene pool there that's pretty deep anyhow on the girl's side. I know that-
I think it's all talent, but I keep my driver's license current and my insurance current, so I can get them to the competition. And I'm not trying to foul anything up. I just, you know, actually, for most of you, you know that I, along with coaching that, I coached some other people. And our board member, our chairman of our board is Scott Ball. And I've got him running now. Last Saturday, I had him run 10 miles. I'm still trying to get Todd out to run, but so far, it's been very difficult.
You told me I was hopeless, Bill.
That was, but it wasn't as a runner, it was everything else. But you are right, I did say that. So, it's probably going to lose that vote. But one of the things that I wanted you to do is, last year, we started this event. And the goal of the event was to put on a world-class marathon. And our measurement to make it a successful marathon, we thought would be 5,500 people the first year. So, that was our goal the first year. In 10 months, I'm kind of a driver, so I get kind of going on things. And so, the first 10 months, we exceeded, we had 10,337 runners approximately. So, it was a little bigger than 5,500. So, our next step is to compete with the L.A. Marathon and the marathons of the world. We were in our first, in our first year, we were one of the top 10 marathons in the United States, in our first year. Our idea is to compete with the marathons of the world, the Chicago's, the Boston Marathon. Now, we're not going to be Boston Marathon. So, when I'm traveling, I figured one of the things that I should do as a, as the race director, I should go find out and see what these guys are doing. So, I went to the other events. I went to Chicago, and I went to the Boston Marathon. And I spent hours and hours watching the behind-the-scenes, on-the-scenes, everything we could do there. And it was kind of funny, because when I was talking about it, and what I did is, I brought last year's brochure, because on last year's brochure, we put "Orange County, California." And so, when I went to all these expos and met with all these people and all these other race directors, the New York race director was one of the guy who puts on the New York Marathon. And every time I said, you know, "The OC Marathon," people knew who the OC was. It was kind of a pretty good deal, you know? And if I'd say Irvine, it was like, "We're Irvine." And then, when I'd say Newport Beach, everybody lit up. So, this year, I said, "You know what we're going to do? We're going to put Newport Beach on the front of the cover." So, what I, the reason I'm here tonight is because I really think that the partnership needs to be established. We've been working the partnership kind of as a, taking advantage of the city and what's here. But what the marathon brings, it brings 10,000, last year, it brought 1,337 athletes, 25,000 spectators. Okay? They talk about filling hotel rooms. Last year, we filled 380 hotel rooms. I'm kind of a greedy guy. I don't want to fill just hotel rooms. I want to fill, you know, restaurants. I want to fill parking lots. I want to fill the 7-Eleven. I want the gas stations full. And what happens with a marathon is, we're starting to bring people in, where they come in on Thursday and Friday. And I'm meeting with a group now, and we're talking about doing a convention in 2007 with our event. And if we do that, then it's a lot of rooms for a lot of nights. We're talking about bringing a convention in on Monday, and having this convention go through the week, and ending up with the marathon on the weekend. Our goal this year is to get 15,000 people. The event will start here in Newport Beach, in Newport Center, as I was told to say by some of our strong supporters, Irvine Company sponsors, our Hope Hospital, Ford, AAA, a lot of real strong community people. Our board is made up of some real strong people. Our charities, we have, in our first year, we donated $330,000 to our charities. We have 10, we have 11. Last year, we had 10 children's charities. This year, we have 11. And I think they're the best children's charities in the world, because we kind of help pick them. We have the Boys and Girls Club of Santa Ana. We have United Serbo-Palsi. We have Help Make a Wish. We have Ronald McDonald House. And I'm sure that most of you have seen our website. But we have what are all children's charities, because that's my thing, kids thing. It's been, everything I do is with kids. I wanted to ask Peggy Ford, here's Peggy, who's helping us with our marketing, because our goal, and I'll just tell you our goal, and I want Peggy to come up and help us with the marketing plan. But our goal now is to take this event to be one of the best marathons in the world. Okay? We took our girls' cross-country team to the world with the nation. I think we can do it with this, with this marathon also. Now, does that mean having 20,000 people, 25,000 people? I don't know. But it means being big, but better than being big, it means being good. So, our next thing is to change the event, the style of the event. We think we have a pretty classy event, but it's far from where it needs to be. We want to take it up to the Newport Beach level, the Mercedes-Benz of marathons, the Monte Carlo of marathons. So, that's our next goal. Our next goal is to take it to the other level. Now, I don't know that I can do that, but I know that I'm sure going to try, and my goal the first year was 5,000, and we did 10,000, so we're on our way. So, if we can make it, we're going to make it. Now, Peggy, I want you to come up and kind of cover a couple of other items. I'm going to introduce Peggy.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor Heffernan, members of council, city staff. Again, my name is Peggy Ford. I'm a Newport Beach resident, a longtime marketer of the City of Newport Beach, and a marathon runner. And I also have the pleasure, as Coach Sumner mentioned, of consulting for this exciting event for our city. And before I talk briefly about the marketing and publicity campaign for this event, which is in direct relationship to the exposure and the fuel that this will bring to the City of Newport Beach, I do just want to highlight that it is a charity event. 100% of the proceeds from this event last year did go to our children's charities, which frankly aren't all in the City of Newport Beach, but do benefit many Newport Beach children. So, with that, just talking a little bit about the marketing and publicity campaign, our efforts are year-long, and the marketing and public relations team promotes this event, which is presented by Pacific Care. And our goal is to position it as a world-class event showcasing the natural beauty and diversity of Newport Beach while providing a fast and scenic race to many Orange County, which will also benefit many Orange County children's charities and leverage our publicity and marketing for the event. In addition to the gold-level sponsorships, which the City of Newport Beach will be able to take advantage of, I wanted to briefly talk about our comprehensive marketing campaign, which is an international marketing campaign. Our budget is approximately $100,000, but it is leveraged to approximately $300,000. We work in an effort of both public relations and media relations, community outreach, which the mayor's walk is part of, and we'll talk briefly about that, traditional advertising campaigns, which print, radio, broadcast are all part of our plan, both in the major metro L.A. market, the national market, and the international market. We have an online advertising campaign, and we have gained considerable media exposure online, an interactive website, which many of you have viewed. We also send out electronic newsletters to our runners, to residents that come to chair for the event. We're going to have a bus shelter campaign that has not been printed yet, so there's an opportunity for the city sponsorship to be a part of that throughout Orange County. And our marketing collateral, for example, those brochures, we printed 400,000 brochures. We also printed 200,000 of those insert postcards, which I think you've all seen. Again, our goal here is to both position this event from a pre-event publicity standpoint, a day-of-event publicity, and a post-event, so it's year-long. Just to kind of really quickly highlight some of the day-event publicity the event got, we obviously got front-page coverage on the Register, publicity in the Los Angeles Times newspaper, a number of additional newspapers at the community level. We got television access on KABC-TV, K-MEX, K-OCE, and KNX stations for our first year, and that was, as I would like to add, at the start of the race, which was in Newport Beach. Additionally, the Associated Press ran a story, and we got coverage in a number of different states, Florida, Pennsylvania, North Carolina, Minnesota, it goes on. I think that you may have seen a little bit of the information in our, in our presentation that we submitted. What that really translates, translates to is the number of impressions, how many people really see Newport Beach on the brochure, how many people really see the OC Marathon logo, the OC Marathon in general. And just for reference, last year's marketing campaign exceeded over 20,000 hits or impressions, meaning over, I'm sorry, over 20 million people saw our branding and our marketing, and that, again, was a value that exceeded over $300,000. I think that in summary, or in conclusion, the goal here is a common goal. We would like to see this event stay in Newport Beach. The sponsorship is not only important from a fiscal, but also from a political standpoint, and I would like to just add that our friends in Anaheim and Disney are already organizing a half marathon in September, partly due to the fact that we had such as a successful event last year, but also because they're interested in the room nights. And from a political standpoint, having a partnership with the city is very, very important from a lot of different perspectives as this event grows, and we would like to see it stay in Newport Beach. I think it's a common goal when we are at the level, as Coach Sumner mentioned, as, you know, a world-class marathon competing with the Chicago or New York Marathon, we would like it to be a Newport Beach event. Everybody knows the OC is Newport Beach, so we'd like to try to keep it here. And sponsoring the event, I think there's been a precedent set in the past, the city sponsors event, like the Newport Beach Film Festival, for example, and this is something that would really help our efforts out tremendously when we do go to talk to sponsors and community leaders and so on. And I think in conclusion, if any of you have run a marathon, or had the opportunity ever to go to a marathon and cheer for an event like this, maybe Los Angeles Marathon, I think there's a special bond that happens with the community between the runners and the residents. And not only is this an important event for, again, the fiscal impact that it will bring to our city, but I think that a marathon like this will also really add to the community spirit and really be a very good thing for our city overall in the long term as it grows. And so, we would just like to thank you in advance for the opportunity to speak tonight, to talk about the marathon. This is a very exciting event for the City of Newport Beach. We ask for your thoughtful consideration on this sponsorship, as again, it is very important to the successes the event grows, and we look forward to building a mutually beneficial partnership with the city. So, again, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any, is that the end of your presentation? All right, any questions from council? Mr. Webb?
Where does the marathon end?
No.
It ends in Newport Beach, too?
No, let me say, last year it ended at, at the dunes in Back Bay. We found that to be insufficient because of the number of runners. The finish line, I think, was 56 feet wide, and we need double that, I think. Isn't that right, Bill?
The finish line now is over at, here's the beauty of it for Newport, is that 80% of the running part of the race is in Irvine, but most of the spectators and most of the runners will all start out here, and that means that, you know, we have the start line. We just did a deal, we put a two-year deal together with the Newport Marriott, because we're hoping that we can put this thing together for two years, and we're going to plan on booking a whole bunch more rooms than we did. Last year we booked 380 rooms, and all of those rooms were in the Newport. They were at the Hyatt, the Radisson, and the Newporter, and some at the Four Seasons. But what happens is, people come in here, and this is where they stay for Friday and Saturday, and then on Sunday morning, they walk out the doors and they start the race. They will run through the city of Irvine, they run through the City of Newport Beach for 2.2 miles, then they'll get into the City of Irvine, and they'll run around Irvine, and they'll end up at the Spectrum or Gateway Center, which is right close to the Spectrum, right next to the border of the Spectrum itself. And the space over there, what we found last year, we had 25,000 spectators and over 10,000 runners, and we just didn't fit in the dunes. We tried to make it finish at the dunes, and it just didn't fit. There isn't really a good location, other than Fashion Island, and we couldn't finish in Fashion Island in December. So, it was like we had to finish someplace outside of Fashion Island. But the reality of the thing is, I think most of the people, they want the event in Newport Beach. Newport Beach is the deal. It's the one you can sell. It's the, it's the crown jewel of Orange County, if you want to call it that. So, it's exciting for us, and we hope that you want to be a partner with us, but it's going to finish in Irvine at the Spectrum, and the reason being is because we have a half a mile of a street that's about the width of a football field, a half mile long, and we're going to close down the whole street.
Okay. Councilman Dale?
Yes, Bill, when you, I appreciate your mentioning room nights, and one suggestion, because I looked on your website, and they had a photograph of a hotel in Irvine. If you can maybe put some photographs of some of our hotels here in Newport Beach.
We closed the deal today with the Newporter, with the Marriott Newport. So, we closed that deal today. It's been a long time, we've been working on it for a while, but the thing with the Marriott is that they've been under construction, and so we didn't know what we were going to have available, so we got what we had available, and so we get everything they have left in, in January.
That's great news.
So, we did put that together, and it's been, we're putting together a two-year package. They're going to be our host hotel.
That's great news, and listening to your presentation, getting 20 million hits or exposure out there, it seems as if a lot of people that are seeing Newport Beach, some will come for the marathon, but there's also kind of the effect of they may come six months later to play golf, and again, we're getting the word out on Newport Beach.
Well, I'm going to cheat a little bit here, because I'm going to tell you, the good news is, is I think we're both benefiting, because when I was out, I mean, I was in Chicago, and I'm telling everybody about our event, and they said, "Well, where's, you know, well, do you know where Newport Beach is?" And they, "Of course, everybody knows where Newport Beach is." So, it's kind of an advantage to us, too. We're bringing them to a city that is recognized around the world. It is, you know, Irvine Company and the Marriott Hotel and the new golf courses, they've all done a great job getting the word out. We just want to be part of that. We want to have, you know, one of the top marathons in the country, or in the world, but we also want them to know about Newport Beach. I just, it's just the perfect destination in December and January. It's just the place to be.
Anything else? Selig, she have a question? Nope, good, just checking down there. Mr. Nichols?
Dear various sponsorships, at what level are they?
We have, Pacific Care came in as a presenting sponsor. They gave us $250,000 and $250,000-plus in-kind services. We have Gold Silver, I think we.
But they committed for two years, so their total is $500,000.
Correct. And then we have a package, and what I don't want to do is mess up the numbers for you, but we have packages ranging from $1 million down to $5,000 if you want to be a friend of the marathon.
Okay.
And the gold one?
Is $50,000.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
As a gold sponsor, can we have our Newport Beach 100 logo representing Newport Beach for this, our centennial for this year? Just this year?
I think that's, I think that's available.
Mr. Ludel, what else is the city doing? If we approve this tonight, what other in-kind, non-dollar services is the city going to be providing?
Well, I'm glad you asked me that, rather than Mr. Sumner, because he would say, you know, anything that he could get, but in earlier discussions, I talked about the staff, you know, setup and teardown that would be required, and he let me know that it would be more important to him to get the city as a gold sponsor, and they would be willing to pay for, for that staff cost, because being a gold sponsor means a lot to them.
Well, how much is it typically going to cost for the staff?
Well, we've just done the event one time. I think the route probably changed a little bit. This time it would be, I would say, just guessing, maybe $6,000.
It was, it was between $17,000 and $20,000.
Yeah, it was, but that was.
A lot of money.
But that was, a lot of it in Newport Beach, then?
It was all, well, yeah, certainly the beginning and end, and we had to close off streets and have cones and patrols. It was significant.
It would be a lot less this year with the 2.2 miles here.
And the plan, the plan to do the partnership piece is that I think there's a lot of stuff that we can do in Newport Beach also for the residents that we don't do other places, and by having the additional dollars, like one of the things we're going to do is that piece with the water department, we're going to send out a mail, so 100% of the people in Newport Beach will know what we're doing. So, we want to make sure that, that we also take care of everybody here in the city so they know what we're doing.
I think you said this was going to end up probably over in the triangle there. Spectrum.
Spectrum.
Spectrum. And then you were going to bus the people?
We're busing them back. We have 85 buses. We have a bus coming every 15 minutes, because everybody will be parked here.
So, it's a.
We heard that last year.
I'm just trying to give people an idea on what, it's a pretty big event.
It's a huge event, and, and the problem is, is I.
When will you do your honors for winners and so forth? Will that be done here, or will you probably do it?
Well, the awards right now, this year, will be at the finish line, which will be in Irvine. In the future, we're planning on having a, we're having, putting some others, what we call a fashion show, and awards gala, and a, some VIP parties. So, it's going, it's growing. It's turning into where it'll be a week event as opposed to a three-day event.
Are you going to have Scott as a fashion plate in this deal?
I think if Scott can lose a little bit of weight, I think he's going to challenge you to a race, so you better be careful.
He and I walked a mayor's race last year, and he went panting in on his knees.
Yeah, he walked the 5K last year, and that's the other thing, is we have something for everybody. We have McDonald's that are going to set up 6,000 square feet of children's fund. We have, we have another program with our marathons called Fit for Kids, and we fight obesity. And last year, I tried to do all the training myself, and I got my nephew, I recruited my nephew to help me, because he's a coach, too, and we ended up in the first week of sign-up with over 400 kids. So, we said, "We need to stop this at this point," and so this year I went and recruited eight, eight other coaches to help me, and now we have 2,500 people, 2,500 kids between the ages of eight and 12, training for our Fit for, Fit for Kids program, and they're going to try to run 25 miles, you know, two miles, one time a week, twice a week, so it'll be 25 miles, and at the end of the, at the end of the nine weeks, they're going to run 1.2 miles, and give them a marathon, and it's our Fit for Kids program. So, we have another 2,500 kids that are involved, too.
Let me ask you, are you, I probably shouldn't say this, are you trying to get the City of Irvine to be the same level as us, because the race ends there? Are you looking for any other city sponsors?
I, I'm only looking for one city sponsor, and the purpose for that is, I want to take, I want to take and call it the host city. We can only have one host city.
I understand, but it would look a little peculiar if this thing came back to us, and the City of Irvine was sitting on this, too.
You know what? I'm going to talk to them tomorrow unless I have an answer tonight, so.
It's all right. I understand.
You know, I got to tell you, Irvine's not the city to worry about. They're very friendly. The city to worry about is Anaheim.
I don't know, I'm just looking, you're talking about exposure, I'm saying, who's going to get the exposure? Who's going to be listed as a gold sponsor? You know, is it two cities or just us?
It's just the one city.
Good, that's great. Just a question.
Let me make a comment. It's honestly just whispered to me, but Beth Crom, who's the mayor of Irvine, would love to have the marathon as an advertisement. She'd also like to have our Lexus dealership, but no dice on the Lexus dealership, and we haven't taken the vote on the marathon. But, yeah, there is actually subtle competition. As a lot of people here know, there's an event up in Huntington Beach. I think we've effectively killed that event, or all but killed it, and so, at this point in time, and clearly the attendance is, it is in no small matter that it's because of Bill Sumner here. My wife last year said, "What is this marathon?" You know, the week before, she says, "There's, I don't see anything about it." Well, it's a whole different culture, and so.
It is a culture. 51% of them are shopping women.
That, that I don't know, but let me say, on the day of, the day of the event is, I sat up there with Scott Ball and Jim, James, what's?
Silva Frye?
Frye, yeah, Jim Frye from Pacific Care, up in that scaffolding, starting the, having him start the starting gun, and watching 10,000 people go by. It was a rather significant event, guys.
We have 500 athletes right now, training every Saturday in the City of Newport Beach for this event. Last year, we had about 700 Newport Beach residents run the event. We have something for everybody. We have a kid's race, one mile.
Let me say that the event started at San Miguel Drive, right next to the, right next to the medical center there, and by the theater, and there was, you know, I got there early, and there was coffee and donuts, starting at crack of dawn, 6:00 in the morning, and thousands and thousands of people. It was rather remarkable.
Any other questions here?
One of the questions that I had was how the, our own Visitors Bureau that we subsidize considers this, because, because it would seem logical, as you've been talking about hotel rooms, that the Visitors Bureau would be the one supporting, rather than the city. And I know we have a representative, head of the Visitors Bureau, and, City Manager, is it fair to ask them that question?
I think it's fair to ask that question. Just from my personal point of view, I think it would be a lot better that the City of Newport Beach be the sponsor than the Newport Visitor Bureau, just as far as name recognition, but that would be something for council to assess.
Good.
I'm Marta Hayden with the Newport Beach Conference and Visitors Bureau, and we have offered assistance to Coach Sumner to help in other ways with, with our members as far as giving assistance for services and helping support it and doing some in-kind. And just like last year, we supplemented them with PR efforts. Peggy did a great job, but we also used our website, did outreach for it. So, that's what, that's what we've done for them.
Well, what do you view, because you're in the, on the hotel side of things, about having the marathon here? It's a good thing, great thing, or just another thing?
No, it's, it's a good thing. All, all events are, are good things for the City of Newport Beach.
Is that a particularly slow time of the year, that, that second weekend in January?
January is a better time than December, but once you reach November, most of the hotels will have a very low occupancy, because we do have visitors, but they are home state visitors for the most part. They go mostly with families during that time, so it is a low time.
Great, thank you. Wait a second, any questions?
Yeah, I have one.
Ms. Selig?
Marta, do you think that the 338 rooms, that's worth $50,000?
380 rooms?
338 rooms, or whatever it was that-
380.
Is it 380?
I think it's 17,000.
I'd have to find that out, as far as what the yield is on that.
Well, no, when you typically promote something for the city, for the Visitors Bureau, I mean, do you have any kind of ratio of room nights you get for the amount of dollars you spend, or anything you look at?
Not, not right off. No, I don't.
So you wouldn't think this is worth sponsoring for 50,000?
No, no, I'm not, I'm not saying it is or isn't. I'm just saying, I can't put a dollar value-
No, from the Visitors Bureau's standpoint?
I can't put a dollar value on it.
Huh?
I can't put a dollar value on it.
No, he's asking whether, he's thinking that maybe the Conference and Visitors Bureau should sponsor instead of the city, pay the $50,000, is that?
Yeah, exactly.
It's not in our approved budget.
Did you consider it at all?
We approved our budget. That's not in our approved budget.
No, but did you consider it when you approved your budget?
We did our budget back, and we brought it to you in July.
So you didn't consider it?
It wasn't in our budget. There's lots of things we'd like to do, that we don't have funding to do.
Okay, thanks.
Mm-hmm.
Any other, Mr. Webb? No? Any comments? Okay.
I'd like to make a motion that the city of Newport Beach be a gold sponsor for the Orange County Marathon.
I'll second that.
Okay, that's a second. Any other comment? Okay. I'll bring in a public comment.
My name is Jim Collins, and I live in town, but I'm here as a photographer to take pictures of everyone here. But I'm also a runner, and Coach is also my coach. And we run at Corona Mor High School every Saturday morning, all year round. And I ran in three marathons in San Diego, New York, and Boston, the last, since this race started last January, December. And talking with people in New York and Boston, they all knew about this race. And talking with some of the magazines, they said, yeah, we'll be there. And I had pictures that appeared in magazines that said Newport Beach. And the brochure here has a photograph of the dunes that went all over the world. So I'm just here to speak as I'm running, that it's nice to travel the world. And somebody, you mentioned the Orange County Marathon, you mentioned Newport Beach. They're not thinking about the OCTV show. These runners are talking about Newport Beach as a place to go. So, you know, everybody's spoken about the financial, but as a runner, it's a great thing. And to be able to say Newport Beach and not Anaheim or some other city, it's, you know, great. So I'd just like to see you guys help out and see Newport Beach logo, city logo on the brochure. And as far as the pictures of everything else, you know, that's my job. And then I just work with Coach and his team, and, you know, just promoting the heck out of Newport, so thanks.
Great, thank you.
Jimmy, only take pictures in Newport Beach. Don't take them at the finish line.
Okay, any other comment? All right, let's vote.
Motion carries.
City clerk?
Motion for reconsideration. A motion to reconsider the vote on any action taken by the city council at either this meeting or the previous meeting may be made only by one of the council members who voted